... services website. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin attending all regular board meetings in the back. Specifically Judy will be here to listen to the public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at 503-916-3045 or ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters with us this evening and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language they will be interpreting and inform the audience where they'll be located in the auditorium.
Hola y muy buenas tardes, me llamo Daniel y voy a estar ofreciendo servicios de interpretación para los que hablan español en el fondo del auditorio acá. Este, muchas gracias y que tengan buenas noches.
Chao buito, que vi, soy Tong Diets Vietnam, si hay que hablar español, estoy sentado atrás, gracias.
Soy Xing Hao, el traductor chino, si tienen alguna necesidad pueden buscarme, gracias.
Saludos, me llamo Jana y traducir de russo al inglés, de inglés al ruso, si alguien necesita mi servicio, está aquí, gracias.
.....................................................................
I'd like to provide a quick overview of the business the board will be conducting tonight. We'll begin with a proclamation on Dyslexia Awareness Month, student and public comment, and then follow with the superintendent's report. We'll then consider the superintendent's evaluation, vote on the 2018-19 district priorities, and receive comments from board members on Shadow of Student Day. Next, we'll receive a report from our ombudsman, consider a construction excise tax exception to policy, consider an alternative procurement for lead paint stabilization, and then hear first readings of two policies and first readings on the rescission of five policies. Board members, are there any items in the business agenda that you have questions on? This does not include those individual action items listed on tonight's agenda.
I have a couple.
Okay.
They will require staff to...
Okay. Okay, any other? Okay. So, let's start with the proclamation. I'd like to ask Director Espaza Brown to present the proclamation.
Okay, so this is October's Dyslexia Awareness Month. It's estimated that one in five children in schools have some degree of dyslexia, and when their dyslexia is severe enough, they may qualify for special education services. We do know that dyslexia is not tied to intelligence, but it's a language-based disability that affects word reading, decoding, reading fluency, and spelling, and occurs in people of all backgrounds and native languages, although the prevalence rate do vary by language. Dyslexia also tends to run in families. Fortunately, recent Oregon laws will now direct schools to screen for students, to screen students for dyslexia in kindergarten. So specifically, ORS 326.726 states that every school district by August 2018 will have one K-5 teacher at each building who is identified and trained as the site dyslexia advisor, and that all kindergarten students and new-to-Oregon first grade students will be screened within 30 days of enrollment for dyslexia using a state-approved screener. And then in January, for those who have been identified at risk, a letter will go home to families. There is a plan for PPS this year of creating a district-wide dyslexia advisory committee. There's a plan for forming parent-focused groups across the district, and to ensure that all dyslexia advisors are identified and trained for their roles. So we are, the district is busily preparing to respond to the need that we have and the new laws to help us identify those students that need greater support. As such, we offer resolution 5734. I have some amendments. Should I read it, what has been posted and then offer the amendments? Okay, so as posted, dyslexia is defined as an unexpected difficulty in reading for an individual who is expected to be a better reader. Dyslexia is a difficult, a difficulty in identifying or sequencing the individual sounds of spoken language which affects the ability of an individual to speak, read, spell, and often learn a language. Dyslexia is the most common learning disability and affects 80 to 90 percent of all individuals with a learning disability. An individual with dyslexia may have weakness in decoding or reading fluency and may have strengths in higher-level cognitive functions such as reasoning, critical thinking, concept formation, or problem solving. Great progress has been made in understanding dyslexia on a scientific level, including the epidemiology, cognitive, and neurobiological basis of dyslexia. Effective reading instruction for all children and screened, screening to identify students at risk for dyslexia, as well as supplemental reading support for students at risk, is critical to prevent reading problems. Early diagnosis of dyslexia is critical to ensure individuals with dyslexia receive focused, evidence-based intervention. Correct identification and intervention provides students with dyslexia self-awareness and self-empowerment. Provision of necessary accommodations and instruction helps to ensure school and life success. Our resolution is the Portland Public School Board of Education recognizes that dyslexia has significant educational implications that must be addressed, and designates October 2018 as Dyslexia Awareness Month. Do I offer?
So, motion, second.
Right.
Entertain a motion?
So move, oh, second.
Okay, so, Director Espaza Brown moved and Director Anthony seconded. Any discussion?
Okay, so I offer some amendments, and I have these written here. Dyslexia is defined as an unexpected difficulty in reading, in, here it is, dyslexia is a specific learning disability in reading that is neurological in origin. And I wanted to strike the reference to an individual who is expected to be a better reader. Dyslexia is characterized by difficulties in identifying, so I'll strike difficulty in, and just adding some language in C, one in five school-aged children may experience a reading disability. And a typo in D to add strengths, and S in strength, we can leave that. That's it.
Ms. Hewson, do you have all those changes?
Item C, one in five school-aged children...
May experience a reading disability.
Got it.
Thanks. Okay, so...
So we need a motion and a second on the amendments?
Okay, motion for the amendments?
Second.
Director Konstam moves and Director Anthony seconds. Any discussion on the amendments? Would you like to vote on the amendments now? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Student representative?
Aye.
Okay, the amendments are accepted by a vote of seven to zero with the student representative voting yes. So now we... Now we vote on the resolution as amended. Okay, is there any discussion on the resolution as amended?
I just would like to say it would be nice later in the school year to hear back from, excuse me, it would be nice later in the school year to hear back about how practices seem to be changing in the classroom and the difference that the trainings are making for kids.
So we'll ask for a report back on progress towards training those, identifying and training the teachers at each site.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll now vote on the resolution 5734. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Student representative?
Aye.
Okay, student representative?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution is passed by a vote of seven to zero with the student representative voting yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll now move on to student and public comment. Ms. Hewson, do we have any?
No students tonight, but four. Our first two speakers, David Morrison and Hayes Witt.
Okay, while folks are making their way to the table, I'd like to review the guidelines for public comment. The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide comments to the board. We value public input as it informs our work and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our response, our responsibility as a board is to actively listen with, without distraction from electronic devices or papers. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comment. If, if you have specific questions that you would like to have follow-up on, please contact Roseanne Powell, the board manager, and she will pass those questions along to the board. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. Any additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the board or the superintendent, please give to Ms. Hewson and she'll distribute to us. You'll have a total of three minutes to share your thoughts. Please begin by stating your names, spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We appreciate your input and thanks for your cooperation.
David Morrison, M-O-R-R-I-S-O-N. Last time I was here, I asked all of you if you had read the safety instructions for the iPads that you're handing out to all the kids, and I'm wondering if anybody left here and went home and read the safety instructions on behalf of all the kids and their future lives and health? No, okay. Well, then I'm going to read you a little bit out of the safety instructions. Apple says, "Read all safety information below and operating instructions before using iPad to avoid injury. Be sure that human exposure to radio frequency energy does not exceed the FCC limits. Orient the device in portrait mode with the home button at the bottom of the display or in landscape mode with the cellular antenna located under the black edge at the top of the device away from the body. Small percentage of people may be susceptible to blackouts or seizures. If you have experienced seizures, discontinue use of iPad and consult a physician if you experience headaches, blackouts, seizures, convulsions, eye muscle twitching, loss of awareness, involuntary movement, or disorientation. To reduce risk of headaches, blackout seizures, and eye strain, avoid prolonged use, hold iPad some distance from your eyes, use iPad in a well-lit room, and take frequent breaks." So, how the, how the iPad actually works is every couple seconds, about 900 times, I think, per hour, it puts out a burst of radiation. There's five antennas on the iPad, one right at the base of the antenna, right that projects radiation right into the, into the reproductive organs. And to read a, something here from Dr., a radiation oncologist at OHSU, Jerry Jaboin says, "Animal studies have demonstrated that long-term exposure to 900 to 1800 megahertz via second-generation mobile phone radiation, which is the same as Wi-Fi radiation, only Wi-Fi has longer chronic exposure, includes, induces hippocampal damage. In fact, a recent investigation of human neuroblastoma cells reveals enhanced susceptibility to oxidative stress even after 1800 megahertz exposure for only 10 minutes. Are we to remain silent while focusing only on optimizing care of our immediate patients, or do we have a responsibility to utilize our clinical knowledge of radiation safety and efficacy to aid in preventing corporate profit from being the primary determinant of acceptable radiation exposure from wireless networks?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Richard Belson and Noel Allen.
I teach language arts at Alliance High School. We're currently located at Benson High School along with the Reconnection Center, Reconnection Services, Dart Clinton School, and the Portland International Scholars Program, also known as PISA. I'm speaking to the entire school board and the superintendent today to ask you to vote that these multiple pathways to graduation schools be included in the Benson Campus Modernization Plan. There's actually a precedent for this. On November 3rd, 2015, the PPS School Board passed Resolution Number 5160 titled "Authorizing Benson Campus Full Modernization Building Capacities as Part of the 2012 Bond Program Master Planning." So in this resolution, recitals D, J, K, and L all included Alliance High School and other multiple pathways to graduation schools and programs when discussing the planning for Benson's modernization. This included capacity reviews and recommendation for space for 500 Alliance students as part of the Benson rebuild. And then there's a section towards the end of the resolution that says, "The Board of Education directs the superintendent or her designee to prepare an analysis of location options for Alliance Professional Technical High School, including the Benson campus. This analysis should further include other multiple pathways to graduation schools and programs to be presented to the Capital Bond Committee and then brought to the full Board in January 2016 as part of the overall facility usage embedded in the enrollment balancing progress, process." So there was an action plan a few years ago, but the Board of Education was never presented with an analysis of location options for Alliance High School. No Benson rebuild plan that includes multiple pathways, schools, has been put forward, and no alternative centrally-located site able to serve 500 Alliance students has been identified. Education specifications for Alliance with a capacity of 500 students have not been completed. Multiple pathways to graduation communities have not been included in any process to find a home for these schools and programs. So these programs, we serve students who are at risk or who have had trauma in many different ways, and we're really an important part of helping all Portland Public School students. And right now, on paper, we don't have a home once the Benson rebuild begins. So I'm really hoping that you'll revisit the 2015 resolution and vote to include Alliance High School, Dart Clinton School, PISA, and Reconnection Center and Services in the Benson rebuild. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Richard Belson. I'm from Scott School. Belson is B-E-L-S-O-N. I'm a proud parent of a fourth grader at Scott Elementary, which is Harvey Scott, but we call it Scott because it's Scott. I'm wearing the away uniform. You might remember our red jerseys from last year. We're an amazing, diverse, vibrant school who works extremely hard and relies heavily on a very busy, dedicated staff, an incredible group of tireless volunteers. I'm here tonight to ask you to implement meaningful boundary changes and focus options reviews this year. I also need to highlight a related issue that has, has had a devastating impact on our school's well-being: grandfathering. Boundary grandfathering allows students who already attend a school, as well as all of their younger siblings, to attend that school when they should otherwise be affected by a boundary change. For example, last year, a small slice of the Rose City Park boundary was allocated to Scott for 2018. I'm sure you all remember this decision. We were all pretty excited about it, and as more Scott students means we get closer to adequate funding for our school in addition to welcoming some great new kids into our community. The problem is the vast majority of the students within this small slice didn't make the move. One did. They remained at Rose City Park because they were grandfathered. Even entering kinders were exempted if they had an older sibling who had been attending Roseway Heights. So despite the boundary change, Scott benefited very little, and we remain under-enrolled, especially in our neighborhood program, which means we're all, we're still severely underfunded. We are a Title I school with no music program, nor many of the other amenities or even basics that many schools within walking, walking distance of ours enjoy. Our staff and students are chronically overwhelmed because there simply isn't adequate resources to meet the emotional and learning needs unique to our diverse population. Sure, there was a conscious decision on, of the parents of the grandfathered children to remain with Rose City Park, likely, likely because that school is rated higher than Scott. Better results on tests, more attractive amenities and programs, and possibly for convenience. But how are underperforming schools expected to reach their full potential if they remain underfunded? It's a vicious cycle that needs to be broken. Meanwhile, Rose City Park is at capacity, and it remains by far the least ethnically diverse school in the Madison Cluster. Why do I bring up diversity in my discussion about grandfathering? The term grandfathering originated in late 19th century legislation and constitutional amendments passed by a number of U.S. southern states, which created new requirements for literacy, payment of taxes, and residency restrictions in order to vote. States, can I finish? States exempted with those, with those whose ancestors' grandfathers had the right to vote before the Civil War from such requirements. The intent and effort of such rules was to prevent poor and illiterate former slaves and their descendants from voting without denying poor and illiterate whites. These original grandfather clauses were ruled unconstitutional, yet the term grandfather has been adapted to other uses, like our boundary issues. We urge you to keep in mind the racist history of grandfathering and recognize its racist impact currently. When you implement new boundaries, do not allow grandfathering. Just rip off the Band-Aid. Our kids can't wait five years to change.
Thank you. Okay, thank you again for your comments. Please feel free to connect with our board manager, Roseanne Powell, if you have something specifically you want to follow up with the board or board office. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, directors. I'll try to keep it relatively brief since we just had a regular board meeting last week, but a lot can happen in seven days in PPS. Among those, we continue to round out our senior leadership team, and we're very pleased to announce that we continue building out our talented leadership here at PPS. We're delighted that we have been able to recruit, hire, and welcome Dr. Wayne Davis as our new area assistant superintendent for the Cleveland and Wilson cohort. Dr. Davis comes to us from Waukegan Public Schools in Illinois, that's just north of Chicago, where he served as deputy superintendent for, for two years. Before that, he worked in administrative positions in Los Angeles, including director of secondary education for Compton Unified. He started his career as a social studies and English teacher. Dr. Davis has a bachelor's degree in history and a master's in education administration from Cal State Northridge, where my son attends as an undergrad. He received his education doctorate from Pepperdine University. Welcome, Dr. Davis. I wanted to afford him a minute to introduce himself to our board.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good evening, board chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Guerrero. I am absolutely excited to be here in Portland Public School and be a member of the Wilson-Cleveland cohort, and so I am interested in meeting each and every one of you, and I have met many of our board members already over the last couple of days, and look forward to walking many of our classrooms and our schools with you.
Great, I'll be there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
No problem. Thank you for having me.
I'm going to visit Wilson.
Wilson-Trojans, absolutely. I've got my shirt.
So Dr. Davis, as his scope of responsibility as an area assistant superintendent, will have 14 elementaries, one K to eight, and four middle schools, so a big job supporting, supervising, and coaching our school leaders and working with those school communities, but we believe he brings some, some really important experience to, to the task.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, Dr. Davis.
Again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're getting very close to finishing up the identification of a principal supervisor team under our new chief of schools. I don't know how long we can use the term new, but Dr. Craig Quayar. And the whole idea behind some reorganization or this new structure was to, to better ensure that our schools and our administrators are getting the responsiveness and the supports they need to keep working at building thriving schools. We're hearing from the field that our principals are feeling that elevated level of support. We're pleased about that, and we're seeing lots of examples out there in the field, including myself personally. I continue to spend time out in the field, visiting schools. For those of you that are following me on Twitter, Super G, you'll see that that's the case. Monday, I was in two schools, among them Whitman. I had a chance to spend some time, not just with seeing how Principal Ruth Tucker is doing with, with her faculty there, but I had a chance to be accompanied by a reporter from Oregon Public Broadcasting, a name familiar to probably all of you, and really pleased to, to continue to see the, the great progress that's happening in the school there. We had a chance to tour some, some pre-K classrooms. We know the importance of high-quality early education and the head start that that gives our students. We were able to hear more about how their response to intervention programs continue to evolve. We saw a lot of students engaged and on task and made for a great visit. So this is just another school with doing a lot of great work, excellent examples of their journey towards making sure all of our students enjoy equitable student outcomes. So kudos to the Whitman School community for their continued hard work. It's an example of many school communities who, who are doing the same. Last week, I had the pleasure of doing a ride-along with one of our special education bus drivers, taking up the invitation and challenge that recently was posed. So I was able to join on a couple of routes chosen by our bus drivers, was there at sunrise, checking the oil and the air pressure before beginning the first of two routes. I would really want to give a special shout-out to the particular driver that I had a chance to participate with, Driver Jeff, who not only completed his route safely and on time, but really showed a special rapport with our students, some of our most vulnerable. And so just really want to give a shout-out to Driver Jeff and all of our special education drivers for the work they do each and every day to safely deliver our students. So last week was also a week when we had many, many, many central office administrators who we gave a hall pass to get out into schools and to see what life is like through the eyes of a student. Through our inaugural, and I know people were feeling like I was insisting on this, but I really felt it was important for folks to get out and shadow a student. We're going to, we're going to talk a little bit about that later in the program, but wanted to make sure and mention that that was something that, that happened this, this week, last week. But today is also my anniversary, not my wedding anniversary, because if I were here, my wife would be upset. But in my role here as superintendent at the Portland Public Schools, about a year ago, had the opportunity to sit in press conference at the Garden at Saban School. I think what I shared then, both with the press and with our directors and the public, was what was attractive about this opportunity and challenge is, is, is the chance to make an exponential difference at Portland Public Schools. And looking back, I think we and, and our team, our educators, our school leaders, and board of directors, I think have begun to demonstrate some important strides towards, towards the goal of, of improving outcomes for our students. This is not exhaustive, but just, you know, a few items, I think, that are worthy mentions of our accomplishments together over the past year. The first is, and you heard again tonight, recruitment and hiring of an entirely new senior leadership team here at Portland Public Schools. Includes a mix of people with a distinguished history... Includes a mix of people with a distinguished history here at PPS, leaders that are local, from the region, leaders from some of the biggest districts in the United States, all who came to PPS and answered the call to action to come also make an exponential difference. Secondly, we opened two middle schools. No small task. It was a very heavy lift on a tight schedule with some environmental issues that had to be mitigated. No small amount of skepticism if we could pull it off, but we did it. The doors opened to more than 1,000 students who now have better, improved access to a comprehensive middle school experience. Third item, we settled all of our labor contracts and continue to work actively improving relations with all of our labor partners and union leaders. We significantly and substantively have continued to direct support to our classrooms where it matters most. We've added more than $7 million in additional teaching positions to our classrooms to work towards an improved student-adult ratio, as well as supports that make a difference to our students. We've redirected resources at some of these targeted interventions. We expect to continue making progress in that area. And then lastly, we're embarking now on a community-wide visioning process with the board's leadership to begin to define our North Star as an organization. As we think about the kindergartners of today and what they need to master at being contributing global leaders when they leave our district, and I'm looking forward to engaging in that conversation with our students, with our stakeholders, our parents, our families, and educators about what that might look like. How might we prepare our students to be those leaders in our world? This is a short list, but it shows how much we can accomplish when we continue working together towards some shared goals. And as we articulate a vision, how we continue to work at demonstrating some steps towards that vision. And so finally, when people ask, you know, "What is it that motivates you?" Well, frankly, we have some brilliant students, some committed adults who are there to serve them as best as possible. Our task is to be responsive in our support to them. So I continue to look forward to working with all the leaders, the educators, our classified staff, everyone who plays a role in our Board of Education in our drive to produce both equitable but also exemplary outcomes for all of our students here at Portland. Thank you.
Thank you. And in honor of your one-year anniversary, what better present than to give a report So tonight, we're going to be voting on the evaluation for Superintendent Guerrero. I want to give a little explanation of how we conducted the evaluation. We used the Oregon School Boards Association OSBA process, recommended process. We used their evaluation worksheet. Each board member individually assessed Superintendent Guerrero's performance on nine standards established by OSBA and five goals that had been agreed upon by the superintendent and the board in a public work session last -- late last winter. Board members then met in an executive session on September 9th to present their individual assessments and through discussion, developed a single shared evaluation. The nine standards are: one, visionary leadership; two, policy and governance; three, communications and community relations; four, effective management; five, curriculum planning and development; six, instructional leadership; seven, resource management; eight, ethical leadership; and nine, labor relations. The goals that were established were: one, build organizational leadership capacity and culture; two, planning for successful new middle school openings; three, settle open contracts with labor partners; four, successful bond planning and management; and five, engage in individual professional learning. So we used the OSBA standards and the goals that we had established. The evaluation period for this first year was nine months, from October 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. So a number of -- there were a number of projects that were still sort of works in process at the end of the evaluation period, most notably the middle schools. And I want to invite my colleagues to provide their commentary about the evaluation. And then after that, I will just say a couple of words.
Is this copy that we have here that says "October 1st" at the bottom supposed to be the final draft?
Yes.
Okay, because this does not include the final edits or proofreading or anything.
It doesn't include proofreading.
Okay.
So we're going to have to -- we're going to have to do the copy editing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, I mean, I would start that I think it's never easy to have seven people write a document, let alone agree on the underlying tone and tenor and details and all of that. But for me, I think this was a constructive and collaborative process. I think it was helpful that we were all fairly like-minded in our general stance about the superintendent's performance over the past year, so there was really nothing contentious about that. It was just a matter of getting those details in place and also collectively thinking about how do we want -- what do we want to identify as, you know, our thoughts about moving forward. It was helpful to have the OSBA template that gave it somewhat of a framework that's been sanctioned, that other boards use across the country. I want to thank Rita and Scott for doing a lot of the writing and editing. It's a really difficult process, but I think aside from sort of the analysis of the superintendent's performance, given some very challenging circumstances, it was also a really good opportunity for all of us to reflect upon where we were one year ago, what progress has been made, and really the tremendous, well, obstacles that were in your way when you walked in the door, not the least of which you mentioned in your report, was hiring some people to help you with this work, which was, is not to be, cannot be overstated. What an incredible challenge that was, that in every single significant area, you did not have the team that you needed when you walked in the door. And you were able to attract absolutely top-notch talent quickly, and they all showed up with an incredible willingness, and also, they didn't really have a choice, but an incredible willingness to get into the work right away and not just responding to the needs of the system, but really recreating the system. And so that was the tenor of the conversation that we had in the process of this evaluation, that we're in the midst of tremendous transformation. This is what we have asked of you, and we are, I don't think I'm speaking out of school, to say that we all feel like we are seeing it move. We are seeing that the seeds have been sown, that the systems are starting to be set and populated, and new ways of doing business and responding to students and responding to our administrators are taking root. And this is not about tweaking. This is about really significant system change. So again, I think it was a very productive process for us, and we feel tremendously lucky.
Thank you, Director.
Well, from my perspective, everything you said, but I thought the process was very affirming, and to me, it affirmed that we made the right decision with hiring our superintendent. And I'm really proud of that. There's been so much accomplished in a relatively short amount of time, but I think that some themes really came through the evaluation from everybody's perspective. And one that is really high on my list that just we heard time and time again was you are very student-centered. And what is a school district but for meeting the needs of students? And so that is, you demonstrate that in many, many ways, and it's wonderful that that's your guiding star, your North Star, as it should be, and it is for all of us. And you're also an instructional leader, and you're really, you have, you know firmly in your mind what a good instruction looks like, and you're bringing us along at creating strong systems so that all of our students can achieve. So it was, again, everything that I believed it was affirming to, that was just repeated and echoed by my colleagues, that we're really proud of the work that you've done and that we've done collectively under your leadership. And we think that the OSBA template was helpful in terms of the pillars of work, although we did modify that somewhat to look kind of more thematically rather than responding to each one of those, because it made more sense to us in that way. So I think that is a process. It was a good format, a good template to use, and then adjust it to our needs here. But again, thank you for the hard work that you've done.
Thank you, Dr. Carr.
Anybody?
I'd just very briefly like to say the same. You've changed the district to be student-centered. That's an enormous accomplishment. We, and I certainly appreciate all of the work that you have done, and we're looking forward to a very successful second year. Thank you.
I know how hard you've worked. I know how hard staff have worked, and including all our teachers and staff at all the schools, and I'm just grateful for that. I know we've mentioned two new middle schools. I think we'd be remiss not to include Oakley-Green in the mix as well, because that was one of the, one of the goals we had was three middle schools. And knock on wood, so far, so good this year. So that's tremendously exciting to see. That in and of itself was kind of like, everything else is gravy, almost. And yeah, the process, I thought, was good and collaborative and allowed to give and take and good listening, I think, on all our behalf, and I think that was, that was great to see as well. I'm so glad you're here. And that's part of it, if you look at this, again, you know, let's not let perfection be the enemy of the good. There are some criticisms in here as well, but I just think back as to where we were a year-plus ago. We have come a long way.
I thought it was a great collaborative process, and I really appreciated the open dialogue we had. We talked about our working relationships. I'm really impressed with the team you put together and how you did it so quickly. I echo everything everyone said. Really impressed with the middle school work you did in opening two, but working on Oakley-Green as well. And then I just want to say thanks, and I'm really happy you're here, too.
So one of the problems of going second to the last is a lot of things have already been said. So I'll just echo many of my colleagues' comments and maybe add just a slightly different twist. So evaluating the superintendent is one of the most important jobs a board has, the hiring, supporting, and evaluating the chief executive. And I've been somebody who in the past have criticized the board for not being rigorous in their evaluation of superintendents. And I think that this process, I really appreciate that there were a lot of things happening when you first got here, and it would have been easy to say, like, "We'll deal with that later," but you really embraced the process and I think held yourself highly accountable to the objectives that were set out in the evaluation and the goals that we sort of co-created. And I think that's a real tribute, because I think it would have been easy to just, you know, you jumped right in. There were a lot of different things, which is an understatement, happening at the time. We really set out some things by the end of the year that we wanted to see. And those things, I think, will have a transformative impact on the district, whether it was relating to equity with the middle schools or building a strong, accountable leadership team that will drive the work forward. Those are all things that not only benefited students this year, but really paid dividends in the years to come. So I also want to acknowledge that often I'm a critic of softball goals. It's like, make these achievable so you can achieve them. And I think many of the goals that were set this year were definitely not softball goals. And you did a remarkable job of really pushing through to the end of the school year and keeping your eye focused on not only students, but what needed to happen structurally and organizationally for the district in order for it to be primed for success moving forward. And to have a district that we'll all be proud of and we would either want to send our kids to or that we think this community needs and deserves. So thank you for your work this past year.
I'd just like to add, from the student point of view, I think your motivation and dedication to this district has really rubbed off on students themselves. I think it was amazing to see you come in and have all these ideas and really have a solid motivation for this district going forward. So I've been here for three years. I know that's not the most seniority, but in your time that you've been at this district, you have made a point to meet with students, you have made a point to visit all the schools, and you have made a point to meet with the district student council. And I think your motivations for all that is the way to go, and it's been really nice to have you here. So I'm looking forward to the future.
That's great.
I just want to wrap up with a couple of final words. I'm going to pull out some sentences from the evaluation. So Guadalupe Guerrero was hired as superintendent of PPS in August 2017 and officially took the helm on October 1st, 2017, more than a month into the 2017-18 academic year. One year in, the board continues to believe that Superintendent Guerrero is the right leader to transform PPS into the district that our students and community deserve. He is at his core, student-centered, and brings a sense of urgency to the task of serving students. During a year filled with many serious challenges, he demonstrated that he has the knowledge, skills, experience, and dedication to lead the difficult work that lies ahead. We are extremely pleased with the strong, student-centered leadership he is providing to the district, and we look forward to a busy second year with Superintendent Guerrero and his new leadership team to advance the restoration of PPS into a strong, high-functioning school district and rebuild trust with the community. I just want to echo everything that everybody else has said. It's difficult to overstate the challenges that kind of plagued this district when you walked in the door. It's going to be a lot of work, and it's going to take some time to bring this district back to what it ought to be and can be. And I think in your first year, I think you made extraordinary progress. I couldn't be happier. So thank you for all the work. Thank your whole team. I have had a glimmer of how hard you've all worked, and it's truly daunting and inspiring to see, you know, how hard everybody is working to deliver real transformation of this district to serve students better. So thank you.
And happy anniversary.
Thank you, Chairman Orrin, to all of the directors. As a lifelong learner who's always interested in continuous improvement, I appreciate your feedback. You're making me blush a little bit there, but I'm very appreciative to have the opportunity to work in partnership with you, and especially appreciative to have this dynamic team here, because I really think it's a reflection of not my work alone, but everybody in the school system who's doing their best for students. Thank you.
And we don't say that enough.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Moving on to the district's 2018-19 priorities.
You have a resolution?
Oh, we have a resolution. Oh, okay. Oh, that. Okay. So we have a, where is it? The board will now consider resolution number?
Fifty-seven thirty-five.
Fifty-seven thirty-five. Any, any second?
Second.
Director Rosen moves. Director Anthony seconds. Resolution number five-seven-three-five, superintendent's performance appraisal for Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have one. Steve Buell.
Thank you, members of the board. Superintendent, Ms. Lawrence. Dr. Guerrero has done some nice things since he's been in Portland. I particularly like the work that is going on around updating policies and the contracts. I like the Twitter stuff. It's nice that we get, have a way to get out all the great things happening in the school district. Of course, he's making a massive error by doubling down on the standards and testing. No one on the school board, except Paul Anthony, nor any of the top administrators, seems to have a good sense of the huge negative unintended consequences leading to major destructive outcomes created by such a testing emphasis. Much could be done to alleviate this, but it is not happening. I don't have time here to go into this, but would be more than willing to explain this to whomever. But instead, I do want to comment on another serious problem. When I came back on the school board five years ago, there were two issues which affected the entire district that needed to be corrected. The first was that teachers and their union were seen as the enemies. This didn't get fixed until the school board changed over again, and Tom Kurler, Paul Anthony, and myself, along with some help from Mike Rosen, straightened this out. The second problem, which still persists, is that for the last 25 years, your zip code has determined the quality of your K-8 education. The schools in the more well-doored neighborhoods were protected from resource loss following Measure Five, particularly after Matt Profit left over 25 years ago, and even today have stronger programs than the ones in less well-doored neighborhoods. And since we continue to staff schools by numbers of kids, this disparity becomes continually worse. As the programs improve in a school, more kids move into that neighborhood, and since the numbers go up, there is an increase in programs. In poorer neighborhoods, just the opposite happens, and the school becomes locked into a downward spiral, creating a worse education for their students. It perpetuates classism, racism, and struggling children, and less attractive schools in which to teach. Yusuf Awad, with my urging, created a committee designed to fix this problem by changing to funding K-8 schools by programs. Paul Anthony and I sat on and spearheaded this committee, which looked like a budget committee, but was actually designed to bring about this change. By funding schools by programs, you create an equal educational foundation for all children, making sure each child has equal core programs and electives, something we haven't seen since Matt Profit. But this is not the only benefit. This also allows you to create a whole different approach to your special education, to your special programs, like special education, special reading, tag, ESL, and so on. It makes the whole process transparent, so you can create formulas which create the equity needed here. For instance, if a school has more kids who can't read well, then it gets more reading teachers or learning centers. True equity. It also allows for better targeting of community resources and smarter budgeting. But alas, lessons. But alas, this board and Superintendent Guerrero disbanded the committee, working on this and in doing so extinguished the light at the end of the tunnel for our most struggling schools and many of our most struggling students. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? We'll now vote on resolution five-seven-three-five. All in, yep. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Student representative? Resolution five-seven-three-five is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative voting yes. Thank you.
All I wanted to say is that we're not going to waste any time in getting together to discuss our goals for the superintendent in the coming year. And some of the goals from this evaluation will recede as priorities, obviously, like the middle schools. Some of them will persist and we'll make some modifications to them, and some new goals will emerge. So we're looking forward to that process and then having more of an ability this year to track it in a more systematic way than we were able to last year, when you were still establishing teams and systems and all of that.
So along those lines, the next order of business is to approve the district's 2018-19 priorities. At our July 26th board retreat, the board and district leadership team developed four priorities for the 2018-19 school year. Once approved, staff will work on a work plan for bringing information to the full board about how their work is going to advance these priorities. The board will also be developing goals based on these priorities. And finally, we will jointly establish goals for the superintendent for, for this school year. The four priorities that we set are, one, set a clear vision and strategic plan; two, create equitable opportunities and outcomes for all students; three, build management and accountability systems and structures; four, allocate budget, funding, and resources focused on improving outcomes for students. These are all fairly broad priorities and will encompass a whole range of work streams So we will now consider resolution number five-seven-three-six, adopting priorities for 2018-19. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Director Anthony moves. Director Brim Edwards seconds the adoption of resolution five-seven-three-six. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment?
There is none.
Any board discussion?
Yes, just briefly. So I'm excited to continue the work. And I just want to maybe, for the sake of sort of the broader community, just maybe have a brief discussion about, you mentioned that the staff is going to come back with a plan, and is it next week that we're having a work session?
Yes.
And so if people pay attention to our, our work session agenda item, if people have comments or things that they want to weigh in on and what we should focus on, that would be the, the time?
That would be the first opportunity.
Okay.
This is going to be, I think, an iterative process. Last year, everything was kind of truncated because we were in a time crunch. We're still in a time crunch, because there's an enormous amount of work to do. But I think we'll, we'll probably be having several work sessions before we finalize the, a kind of common work plan for the year. And then, and then specific goals that will be used to evaluate the superintendent for this academic year.
So I'll just mention, staff hasn't wasted any time, just for the audience. These four priorities resulted from an extended work retreat between the executive team, leadership here at PPS, along with our board of directors. They are broad. It is a next step to identify what are going to be those specific work strands, whether they're staff-led or board-led, but that are contributing towards movement in these four areas. And we expect it to align with some of the more specific department-level work plans, which I know have already started to, to get constructed, using these four priorities as, as sort of a guidepost.
So is that what we'll get next Tuesday? That will be sort of a first draft or a first cut at sort of the staff's look at sort of the topics underneath those four areas?
I think we're looking forward to bringing to the board some, some, some subbullets under each of these priorities around work strands, not necessarily department-level work plans, but a listing under each of these priority areas around where we're going to be focusing our efforts and sort of as a conversation starter for ways that the board's actions also accompany those efforts.
Great. Thank you.
And for our part, part of that conversation will be, how do we set up a system of checking in on those objectives over the year, so we don't just arrive at the end and look back, but really having some metrics to see how we're doing?
Or course correct.
Any further discussion? Were you about to? Okay. We'll now vote on resolution five-seven-three-six. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Student representative?
Yes.
Resolution five-seven-three-six is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Pace voting yes. Next item is reflections from the board on Shadow a Student Day. And I'd like, like to kick it over to Superintendent Guerrero.
If I could set the stage a little bit regarding Shadow a Student in September, an effort, an initiative to get a lot of folks who might not otherwise get the opportunity to experience a typical school day through the eyes of our students. We had a couple of staffers who we documented their experience, and we thought, rather than describing it, that maybe we'll let the visual sort of tell the story here. So I think we have it queued up.
I haven't done PE in over a long time. Oh, man. It's a workout.
I'm so excited, because students have such, they have the best perspective. So I'm a student today, and I get to, you know, see the world through their eyes.
It's been great. I've been sitting in Mandarin class for the last two hours, not understanding anything, but it's been awesome to see students.
I'm going to head upstairs to pre-echo, which is where Elise is now, because I didn't want her to miss too much class.
Okay.
And quietly pull her out first, and then you guys will just make a plan for how you're going to enter class.
Sounds good.
Good morning. Are you glad to be here today?
I am very glad to be here today, because I get to see what it's like to be a student in Portland Public Schools.
If my sister was 60, how old am I?
Fifty-seven.
Wow. Usually people say 30.
Hi, I'm Camille. Nice to meet you. So excited to shadow.
Me, too. My family has, like, supported me 100% all of my life to go to college and, like, pursue a career, so it's definitely, like, in my mind, and it's something I want to do. I'm taking sociology and women's studies. Next term, I plan on taking business, because I plan on majoring in business in college. So, yeah, she's giving me a lot of information about that.
Well, I think that in calculus, it requires a lot more focus and, you know, to try to understand. And then in a class like ceramics, it was really cool to see how the students moved in between tables, and I think it was a great way to build community. It awakens just another piece of the brain. And while the technical skills are super important, I think it's also important to have a well-rounded curriculum.
It's been great to know that we have a district office that wants to come and see what our students' experience is like every day. And seeing Jonathan here today was great to see him in the classroom, working with students, in the lunch line, navigating that process, and then just hanging out in the cafeteria. So it's been, it's been a wonderful experience for us.
Hi, look over by camera.
I think it's important that we, as central office administrators, have a chance to see what it's like to, to be a student. Many of us haven't been in classrooms in a really long time, so wanting to make sure that we understand how our decisions and our actions every day impact the lives of our students.
I really enjoyed her, like, company, and I had a lot of questions about college, and she made sure to answer them. So that was good.
Thanks. That there's nothing more valuable than the student voice in all the things that us adults get to do. And there's, there's a huge gap, you know, between impact versus intent. And so as we do the work that we do each and every day with a student in mind, I think it's important that that student voice is at the table along the way.
Awesome.
Running. We don't need to run, see? We don't need to run.
Well, there you have it. There's just a couple of staff examples, but we'd all love to hear how our board of directors, who had a chance to shadow a student, how their experience went.
Unfortunately, I got injured right before the day, so I wasn't able to do it. But anybody else want to chime in? Go ahead.
Well, I had the privilege of going to Markham Elementary School, and Principal Sean Garnett was very kind and welcoming me, and the children were delightful. I shadowed a fifth-grade student from Eritrea, I hope I said that correctly, who was delightful, had the biggest dimples you've ever seen, and her class was just so welcoming, and as all, as were the, was the staff. What I want to say, they're busy. The school did a lot of teaming, but there was a lot of time. You could just tell that they're a really cohesive student group, really supported each other. And there was a lot of teaming between the teachers to, for class periods for particular subjects, so that they, you know, had areas of expertise, which was really impressive. And it was just a delightful morning. I couldn't stay all day, but it was so much fun, and I'm really appreciative of the staff being so open to allow us to be there and kind of, I hope it wasn't too disruptive to the kids' learning, since they were great. It was really fun.
I, I got to be at Cleveland with the G. I was sent back to Cleveland to finish my high school diploma. I got to be with Kira Swinth. She's a junior and an IB student, and it was, it was a great day. I sat in on Spanish, History of the Americas, CrossFit, which I, which was the most intimidating class I've ever been in, and Theory of Knowledge. But I was really impressed by, the teachers were all engaged and enthusiastic and really looked like they loved what they were doing. And the students were equally engaged. It was just a high energy, even in the first class on Friday morning. And then I had time to, when I was at lunch, I got some feedback from the students. And the three top things they had to say, one was that the best part of school is the dedicated, caring teachers. They talked about a lack of diversity at Cleveland and that we need to be more welcoming to create a more diverse environment in Cleveland. And then they said the counselors have an unmanageable workload. But it was a great experience, and it was, it was fun, too, except for CrossFit.
We should all go back.
So I just slipped on my Madison Advanced Placement t-shirt here. And I want to say, thank you, Carson. You rock. The three classes I went to, the first was AP Calculus, and I couldn't help reflecting from my own experience as a student in PPS, oh my God, 50 years ago roughly, when I was at Grant High School, which then was, it's still a great school, then was considered one of the top schools in America. So here I was in an AP Calculus class. When I was at Grant, we had no AP classes, period, and we had no calculus. That if you wanted to take calculus, I was in a, we had a night class, a special night class that PCC set up for us, and we had, I don't know, 25 students from all the high schools in PPS. That was our only access to calculus. So to see that, I think, in every one of our high schools now, there are teaming calculus classes, and this, the class was a great community. Kids were immediately to tables, working together on projects. We were doing some very hairy differentiation of fairly complex algebraic expressions. And I hadn't done this stuff in a long time, but it started coming back. So that was, that was kind of fun. The second class I went to was the senior project class. So first, we were all kind of tuned in. And I hadn't done this stuff in a long time, but it started coming back, so that was, that was kind of fun. The second class I went to was the senior project class. So first, we were all kind of tuned in to the Kavanaugh hearings, and then students went to work writing and really reflecting on what's, what's a good education look like, a liberal education, and reflecting on race and class and sexism and social justice as part of that. And certainly 50 years ago, there were huge issues and in our, in our school, I remember wearing black armbands to protest the Vietnam War. The latest wave of feminism was coming front and center, certainly racism and anti-racism were huge issues. But we, I don't think we had the personal reflection going on that I saw happening in that class. So there's, I think it's a deeper reflection going on today than, than there was 50 years ago. The third class was AP Biology, again, an AP class. They were doing amazing stuff and doing the, doing things that were way beyond what, what I was doing, again, at a very top-notch school 50 years ago. So it was pretty cool. And then talking with stu, and of course, there was lunch. Modern-day lunch is sitting on the floor in the hallway. I did have to make a run to Burgerville. The other piece we still have, when I was talking to kids about, you know, what's the work that's still, you know, what's working, what isn't? What's working is, you know, the great diversity of classes at Madison, the great teaching, dedicated teaching going on in all the classes I saw. What's still, still working on, in particular sexism among students. Madison was one of the schools, I know Grant was last year, and I think there were a number of other high schools where students were protesting just the culture. And again, watching the Kavanaugh hearings, it's still very much a part of high school culture, and I'm really glad to see consent, the concept of consent start to make its way into our health classes because it really needs to be there. But we've got to, still have a lot of work to do there with our, with our students.
I was at Grouse School with an absolutely delightful fifth grader. Principal Annie Tapsey is obviously doing a wonderful job. I have a very clear memory of elementary school. And this last week, as the Kavanaugh hearings have been going on, I'm sure that like most other people who were in high school in the middle 1980s have been reliving memories of some fairly revolting people. But children were not this nice 35 years ago, 40 years ago. They were not, as Director Bailey said, so self-aware and so aware of others and others' histories, others' needs, and so sensitive to those. So very kind and gentle with each other. There's an awful lot of talk about school climate, and I think we have made astonishing improvements to our school climate. It was absolutely wonderful. I'd also like to say that 31-year-olds, no matter how nice they are, really do fill up a standard classroom. That's, that's, yeah, they, they fill up all of the available space, and class size, I think, is going to continue to be an issue for us, and unfortunately, it's probably going to get to be a more pressing issue. But I had a wonderful time and I found it very, very encouraging for the future of Portland Public. Thank you.
So I think there was a mistake. I think Jonathan and I must have gone to the wrong schools because I didn't get to do PE, and that was my favorite subject, so I really feel like I missed out. So I was at Franklin with Clara, who's a multi-sport athlete and senior who had a mix of AP core classes and some electives. And fortunately, before I got there, Roseanne had given me really good advice, which was, "Don't look like an adult." Like, "Don't wear a suit." So I wore my regular clothes. But it was a great day, but somewhat humbling. We have some pretty amazing students that are engaged in some pretty deep learning. My day at Franklin included anatomy and physiology, AP seminar, lunch outdoors, and a journalism class. And I guess just a little bit of commentary on what's different. The announcements came on and they said that if kids are ordering food to be delivered to the school, like Uber Eats, the office would not accept them. I thought, like, what happened to your sack lunch? It's like, what? So a couple observations. Really great energy at Franklin High School, the biggest, largest high school by student population in PPS. Students, just to Director Anthony's comment, really friendly and nice. They were actively engaged and seemed excited about their classes and the activities they were involved in. The humbling part of the day, I think, was when we started an anatomy and physiology class, we were led through a 90-minute lesson on creating exponential modeling. And since Roseanne had told me, like, we were supposed to do whatever the students were doing, I grabbed a Chromebook and went through the lessons, and literally, it was 90 minutes of building a model so that you can look at the exponential effects. And I've got to say, but for Clara and a couple of her classmates, I would not have gotten my model working. I was wishing Director Rosen, who's got a PhD in environmental science, had been with me, but Clara did just fine. So I think one of the things that I would say, just my reflection from the day, is when I was sitting there, I got, first I got to class just a little bit late into the anatomy and physiology classes, and everybody had their computers out and they were already through the screens, and I was trying to catch up. And it made me think about students who, for a variety of reasons, aren't in school every day, and, you know, what, sort of that panic moment of like, what's the lesson plan? What's everybody been doing? I don't know where we're starting. And just, I know how I felt for that brief 90 minutes, was just continuously sort of trying to get caught up and understand what was happening. And it made me think about those students that really have a disadvantage if they're not in school every day and benefiting from the engagement with their instructor and their classmates over the work, and that those big gaps really can become gaps that are too large to bridge. And it made me think about, like, what can we do to be helpful to students who, for one reason or another, aren't able to come to class every day? Or how do we encourage them to really not have those gaps so that they can be fully engaged? Because it's really a terrible thing, feeling to be not ready and equipped to engage in the work that's underway. But it was, it was a great class, and I will say that the other students, what I really liked about it is, we're totally helping each other. So this collaborative learning environment has really been fostered, and it, I was super impressed with both the students and the teachers and the work that was underway. So, great experience. Thanks for giving us the opportunity to do that.
Yeah. So I was with a very energetic and squirmy fifth grader at Riggler Elementary, which was a great experience for me and a great opportunity for me to practice my Spanish and learn from all these great Spanish speakers. Riggler went, transitioned this year to an all dual-language immersion Spanish school, our only one in the system, actually. So it's really suffused with Spanish language and Spanish heritage lessons all around the whole school, so that was, that was great to see. You know, we all get into this work because we're interested in sort of how can we help move the whole system. So experiencing things with my student for the day, it was hard not to get out of the mindset of what is this experience telling me or teaching me about system-wide issues that we think about and talk about all the time? And, you know, a couple emerged. One was that for one of the classes, the, my student had a long-term substitute who was not a fluent Spanish speaker. And we all know that we have difficulty attracting bilingual teachers and finding bilingual substitutes, and you just can't get around the fact that, you know, a full, a full day's learning is not happening in that less-than-ideal situation. And it's something that we, we recognize. It's not for a lack of trying, but we need to, we need to keep working on it because that's something that my kids face in dual-language immersion as well and that we know is going on. Other things too, good things, we've had a lot of conversation at this dais. We made a commitment in the budget a few years ago for what we call site support instructors, so schools that are impacted by a lot of teacher absences and a lot of just transition. We supply, we have adults in the building that are floaters. They either cover for teachers who are absent or they are, are can supplement teachers. And I had just really great time with one of those site support instructors who knew these kids really, really well and can be an extra adult in the classroom with the teacher, paying particular attention to the kids that had some pretty intense behavioral needs, and just a very loving, caring, insightful adult. So it was just a reminder that these kind of, what we consider extra investments, really do make a huge difference for, for our kids, and we have to find a way to keep doing it. You know, another thing too is everybody always likes to knock school lunch, and, you know, our PPS nutrition department is very proud of the work they do and very proud of their, you know, farm-to-table relationships and everything. And I got to say, I saw these kids eating a lot of fresh vegetables, a lot of fresh fruits, loving it. Really, this is not gray food. This was healthy, real food that they seemed to enjoy. So I got to put that plug in because everybody likes to kick the old school lunch program, but it was pretty great. So the, just the, the only other thing I would say is that going from, you know, classroom to classroom, art class, Spanish class, then recess and supervised lunch, I did feel like there was a common language among the adults and a common set of behavioral expectations, and they were communicating to these kids in the same way. And again, particularly the kids that needed a little extra attention, like my kid that I was with, who was a little pushy in the, in the four-square line, shall we say? And actually killed me in four-square, cuatro cuadrado, which I thought I was pretty good at, but they crushed me. But, you know, just a lot of love and compassion and very focused attention from all the adults in the building. So it was really nice to see Riggler in, in transformation. Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, directors, for this, taking the time to have a student-centered moment, because I think it's important to lead by example. I spent my time at James John Elementary. Thank you, Principal John Melvin, for pretending the superintendent's not sitting in one of your classrooms. But I got to, I got to start off the morning speaking to my shadow, a student, fifth grader Biani, his mother, who clearly very, very proud of her son, described him as an exceptional young man. I think after spending the time with him, whether in PE or origami or working through some difficult math, that was clearly evident. So I really appreciate our students, their families, our schools for letting us get out of our roles and spend a little time kind of seeing the day through their eyes, all the staff that took the moment and got the hall pass and permission to please go do that. I think it's important, and thank you. If I could sort of point a privilege here, I would love to hear what our student delegate Paisler has to think about all of this.
Thank you. I can actually, I do have some feedback for these field trips. The days that they were going on, the days all of you were in the schools, it put a smile on my face to receive multiple texts in the morning saying, "Mike Rosen's in the front hallway. Julia Brim Edwards is in my class today." Oh, my gosh. I received lots of messages from fellow students, and it really put a smile on my face to hear that they were excited to see that district officials were actually in their schools, walking around and seeing what we do every day. We have a, we, all of us have a very busy and integrative school day, so students felt great about that. I also did receive emails from students that are on the district council offering their time. Students were interested and, that hadn't been connected before, that wanted to invite district officials and board members to their school. They wanted to take, take time out of their day to be able to make that happen. So on my side of things, I would like to, to like this, I would like this to become a regular field trip for all of you, so, yeah.
I'll end just by sharing that this Friday, actually, the staff is going to come together who participated, and we're going to collect, we're going to do a little bit of a formal survey and make sure we kind of capture our learnings and reflections. I haven't mentioned to the, to the staff, but I'm hoping Super SAC would be interested in sort of hearing what our overall sort of takeaways were and see if we can bounce that off our student leaders. Thank you.
For those of us, meaning me, who didn't get to do this, I'm, I'm looking forward to another opportunity at some point, so. Okay. So we're going to move on to the Ombudsman's Report. And I'm inviting Judy Martin, the district ombudsman, to come down and talk to us about the work you're doing.
Hello. Dimming of the light. It's a tough thing to follow and with what I talk about, but good evening, Chair Moore, Director, Superintendent, Elizabeth. I'm very happy to be here tonight, and I, I was given 15 minutes. Where's my little pen here? And I have a lot I can say in that time, so I'm going to breeze pretty quickly through my slides. The, Brian mentioned, oh, that's a lot of slides, so I got the hint. But I'm going to start with what is an ombudsman? And as best practice for ombudsman, it's always important for me to start with that. That is the number-one question I get, and it's more like, what is an omnibusman or an ombuds, or, you know, it's a, it's a very difficult word. And I want to say that when I first took this position, I too was like, why are we calling this an ombuds? And I'm actually, have come completely around to embracing it because an ombudsman is for very specific things that someone like an advocate is not. That is a neutral party, independent of other organizational structure, confidential and informal. So I'm not an advocate. I often get mistaken for an advocate for PPS. I get mistaken for an advocate for parents, students, although I am a little bit biased per students, I must say. But I am an advocate for a fair process. My two main roles are working with people to try to help them resolve their concerns in the least formal way possible and to bring systemic concerns to the attention of the organization. So when I see the same problems happening over and over, that is my responsibility to let administrators know that we're having the same kind of problems and need to address it systemically. There are major advantages to alternative dispute resolution, that is, resolution outside of formal processes. And I, this is something that I have really come to understand fully at Portland Public Schools, that the way we do things now sets the stage for what comes next. What do I mean by that? PPS has a very long tail. If there is a child who comes in kindergarten and they have a problem with a teacher, something occurs, doesn't get resolved well, the teacher won't speak to them right away, they don't get emails back from the principal, they go along, they, they get through it, they go through second grade, they go through third grade, fourth grade comes along, there's another problem, oh, this is how PPS always is. This is how they, you know, you start getting some feelings when things are not resolved, they stick with you. So how we resolve something early on, as often as possible, in a compassionate, kind way, it goes a long way because we have families with us for a very long way, it goes a long way because we have families with us for a very long time. I am also a parent of a child in Portland Public School, very proud parent of a child who's been in Portland Public School since kindergarten. And I understand how that looks when it just feels like a systemic thing. It's important to take care of people well. And this is what that looks like in a graph form. Past unresolved issues are the largest part of the iceberg of conflict, as this pyramid is called. So when you're looking at the current issue, there's a lot of things involved, but past unresolved issues are the number-one thing. When people can come to an ombuds, it's, the, the biggest thing is that it's voluntary and that visitors are really in control of that process. The nice thing about it is they can speak confidentially. They can choose how much they want somebody to be involved. I can mediate, I can facilitate conversations. I can also help them access formal processes if that's where they need to go. But they are in control at that point. Formal processes, they're not in control. Once you, once you have put in a formal complaint, it is now completely outside of your control. And I know you all are very appreciative of that. You see how that looks when it gets to you. It is really uninviting and it doesn't feel good to give somebody three minutes to share their heart and then to say, "We vote in favor of the superintendent," and not being able to really say much more. That, that's what formal processes can look very, very rigid. And they're not confidential. So I can help people to express their concern, hopefully resolve their disputes. We cannot really see that, that says manage conflict in the little yellow box. And learn more productive ways of communicating and collaborating, which is the key to effective My process is intake. Sometimes people just call, they give me a description of the issue and I can just say, "Oh, the next thing you do is this," and that, that resolves it. Sometimes, it's usually a little more involved than that, finding out exactly what, what the concern is. Sometimes that takes some sleuthing to really get it down to a manageable problem and what needs to happen next. Oftentimes I do intervene by learning more about the situation, speaking with the principal. I sit down with parents and principals quite of, often and try to mediate a solution. Sometimes I need to refer them to another method of resolution, such as a formal complaint process or personnel complaints. So these are some of the strategies I use, referring to appropriate resources, facilitating, identifying the issues, that's, that's a big one. So I'll jump into what this last year looked like in my office. And I, I like to caution that the numbers are just the people who access my services. It's not the full number of complaints in the district, it's not everything, it's just the numbers of people who came to my office. And I like, I use the word visitor because it's a more neutral term and out of jurisdiction is issues that come to the office that are not within Portland Public Schools. I've had, just today, a call from Centennial School District. I get calls from other districts. Unable to complete is when I was not able to reach the person because I didn't have a working number or some reason that I was not able to connect. So I had 376 visitors who accessed my office this year, last year. And this shows what that looks like over the course of the time I've been here. You can see it is increasing every year. Unsurprisingly, parents are the largest group of people who come to my office. They primarily come for policies and practice and that, that is because, I said it so well in my reports, I wanna just refer to how I said this. Yes, it's not what, it's how. It's often not what happened, but how it happened that is the source of contention for people. And that is why a majority of things are related to policy or practice. It's how, how something occurred. There was a new category that arose this year, the parent conduct, and that was specifically parents who were frustrated with other parents' conduct. The outcome is a variety of things. Somebody, I may just give a resource, somebody may file a more formal complaint with Portland Public School. You can see the majority are informally resolved. Some I was unable to complete. So this year is an, I did, this is a new graph, I've done this for this year, just trying to tease out where issues originated. And I suspected most of them were elementary school. It felt like that and it bore out when I did the numbers. And that makes a lot of sense because the younger ones can't speak for themselves as much and as students get older, they start speaking for themselves and advocating for themselves more. The top concerns are relational and that makes complete sense because every single day our buildings are full of people interacting with people, whether it's students and teachers, administrators, staff, out on the playground, it's always people interacting with people. So the top concern was bullying, children and students doing things to each other. Next was being frustrated with behaviors in the classroom with teachers, maybe homework or how they're teaching or how people feel they treated their child specifically. Special education, of course, there's many concerns that arise in special education, enrollment and transfer. Communication, for the purposes of this graph, that's literal communication, like I'm not getting emails back or I don't like how the newsletter is or is not done in my school. Then there's a myriad of other issues that arise. I wanna go back to that, just to say, this, this is the thing I love about my job, though I say I have the best job here at Portland Public School, because I get to learn a lot about every single thing that happens here. Well, I learned some about a lot of things that happen at Portland Public School and it's a great privilege. And that's my contact information. I, I don't know if you all had a chance to look at my report. I did have some recommendations that I made this year. And I make recommendations throughout the year, but I put three in the report that I, I wanted, that were larger recommendations. And one was concerning, what Director Moore had mentioned at one of our leadership meetings, where the problems at Portland Public School are, are larger than Portland Public School and larger than Portland Public School can take care of. We need our city, we need our county, we need our community to assist us with the problems that our families have. And so, that said, I, I feel like we need a coordinator to help coordinate with other community agencies. We don't have a specific position, that role here at Portland Public School. The second recommendation that I made is social media. We just do not do enough around social media training for both staff and for students. That is, when we talk about the bullying, there's an element of that. A lot of it starts at home on the phone and then they bring it into the school. And it's, it's a real challenge. And I'm, I don't think our society in general has gotten on top of that, but there are some things we could do, even just educating our children better about that. The third recommendation I have is about communication in general for our staff. And I would love to see more training for our staff on how to communicate better with families right out of the gate, because a lot of our problems would be solved just by the way we talk to people. And I do have, I had the privilege, last week, it was the United States Ombudsman Association Conference was held here in Portland and I'm the Education Chapter Chair. And I had a gentleman by the name of Ron Kizner, who comes from the Cleveland Metropolitan School District, and they adopted a communication model. And I brought you some of the manuals that he brought, he did a training for us at my Education Chapter. But there are models out there that we could adopt that would be helpful for our staff. Do you have any questions for me?
Thanks for your presentation. Question about your first recommendation for a wraparound service coordinator. Is that somebody who would work directly with families, connecting them with, say, county services? Or is that somebody who's more a systems coordinator trying to make sure that those connections are happening on a regular basis or both?
Well, I would love it to be somebody who worked with families, but I think that would be a very large job. So yes, I think it's a systems person to start with, to make sure that we have the systems in place and maybe working with counselors and individual schools on how to make sure that happens.
Okay. And many years ago, I worked for a crisis intervention, social service agency, and I trained volunteers in empathic listening skills and problem-solving and how to go a little deeper, you know, not, not counseling per se, but really to help them identify what was going on beyond the initial presentation of an issue. And not only did that help our volunteers in working with people who needed services, they reported, you know, "I went home and I started listening to my child differently" and so on. So I, that kind of training has all sorts of benefits.
Yes.
Judy, I was wondering, do you use interpretation services if there are second language?
Yes.
More appearance? And do we have any numbers on how many access? Is there a different rate?
You know, I thought you might ask that, Julie. I had that.
So you came prepared.
Well, I did. And you know, I, I have not, I cannot get what I would call valid data. If I could get, because when people call, I pick up the phone and usually there's some heightened emotion and I don't wanna start taking demographics. I wanna really stop and hear what they have to say. Sometimes I can find people in our database and I can find race, ethnicity information, demographic information. And so I have some, but not enough to have integrity to my data. And it's interesting because I, I was able to get about 205 and about 16.6% are Hispanic. The interesting thing to me, it breaks down very similar to Portland Public School breakdown, except for black, which is for Portland Public School, 9.3%, for my office, 20.5%. So I found that very interesting. But again, I don't feel like that data has a lot of integrity, which is why I don't put it as its own slide. If I can get more than that in the future, I will, if I can get a larger percentage of my data.
So if a parent doesn't speak English and they, who, who do they call or did they call your office and then you look for?
They do. And if, if I get somebody and I can't understand them, I will say that. Usually people, I think a lot of our communities have experience with calling offices where, you know, they're not, they're, they're, so they don't. What they're going to do is call a trusted member of their community. I am a big fan of making relationships with trusted community organizations and letting them know that my services exist. So then if they have a family, then, because that's where people go in underserved communities, they're gonna go to a trusted friend, a trusted party. And then it's incumbent on me to make sure that those folks know that this service exists. And then, so I've gone out to agencies where they, they will arrange an interpreter or I can bring one from Portland Public School so that we can work on the issue together.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for your work.
And that was back to phones. I know when phones first started cropping up all over, some of our classrooms said, "You know what? Put your phones away, no phones allowed." I, I think people have kind of surrendered. But I don't know if we have a, I suspect we don't have a phone policy of any sort in this district.
Like, like phones are no phones during class or you can get your phone back at the end of the day because you abused its use or?
It's individual school. What I, what I've learned is by individual school, they have different rules. Some are really tight, put your device away. And if we see your device out, it's gonna come and get locked up in the office. Others are not so much, and it seems like the older the students are, the less managed that is.
Yeah. And it's, I know it's a real challenge for classroom teachers because phones can be used for, hey, let me look up what we're talking about, very relevant use, or I know some students take notes on their phones and other uses as well.
It's a new time.
And there's no way, no way to monitor that with any kind of regularity.
One great middle school principal we have who is very into technology, his mantra for his school is "off in a way or on in academic."
All our buildings, like the ground floor of the Field House at Franklin where there's no service.
Are you doing your questions? So I just had a couple of questions, some overarching ones. So you had an assessment of how, of the resolution, does, how do, and maybe this is more a question from Ms. Soden, how do we know that there's an agreement on that there was a resol, a resolution?
I can answer that. So, well, I can kind of answer that. So a resolution doesn't necessarily mean that it was resolved to the satisfaction of the person who had the complaint. It means that it was resolved and they did not choose to go forward with a formal complaint or some other method. And, and I'm trying to think how I, of an example that would not breach confidentiality, but I can't immediately off the top of my head. But oftentimes, it's, it's, people feel it's helpful when they understand why something happened, why that's the way that it is. Portland Public School is very much, they won't do something super special for one student that they can't do for every other student in that same situation. So if it's a situation like that, what's really helpful is if we can talk to Portland Public Schools about maybe every other student in that situation needs that same resolution. So that helps us deal with things systemically. And one thing I've learned over and over and I appreciate and I understand as a parent myself, a lot of parents who have an issue, if it doesn't get resolved to their, to what they would like, they're, they're very adamant that they don't wanna see that happen to someone else. And they, their heart is not just for their own child, it's for other students. So how can we make this experience different for somebody else? Either in the way you were treated or how the outcome. Unfortunately, we can't go back in time and change sometimes things that have already happened, but we can try to do better in the future.
Yeah. I'm not sure, I think maybe, I'm sure, I'm sure I'm getting the answer that, or I'm asking the question correctly. Because, so a resolved could be, they don't like the answer, but they understand why something happened and they had the information of what the policy or practice was that led to the decision, which is a different way of resolving things. And I'm, I guess I'm interested in like what our metrics are to know that it's not just a, well, they liked the outcome or they didn't like the outcome, but did they actually get more information or some more nuanced metric that is, that, that we know we've added value in the, in the process?
I think before you answer, I'll just add on to that because my question, one of my questions is kind of related, which is around how are we taking your data and experiences in aggregate and using it to inform the system more broadly? And so to Julia's point, if something is resolved, meaning there's no further action to take, but it has identified a, a sticking point in the system, how are we extracting that concern and trying to address the root causes of the problem?
Okay. So for, from my end, what I do in those situations, if it's something specifically that could be systemic, for example, when, and this I can give an example, when a child is let off the bus and there's no adult there for the child and the parent is surprised that the bus driver left the child. But then when you look at the laws and they say it's up to parents to determine whether their child is mature enough or capable or however, it's, and they have posters and they have all this information about it. My feeling on that is if somebody was surprised about what the state law was, that we need to be a lot more active in giving the parents that information so they're, they understand what happens when your child walks home from school, you know, that what happens when your child walks home from school, you know, that's up to you, it's not up to the school. So there is great material available. So I provide the law, I provide, that I've learned, I provide the written materials, the posters, can we put this in the packets before kids go to school? So that would be an example of something that did not, you know, the, the parent was not happy with the answer, but that is what the laws and regulations are. But what can Portland Public School do to make that better?
The one thing I would add is, we have been trying over the last year, so many of us knew around the table at, at the central office, is really trying to highlight that we do have an Ombuds and that teachers, principals, administrators, our area superintendents know that there's a process. We're trying to, we're trying to encourage people to come to Judy, talk it out, have, you know, be heard and have some informal resolution as opposed to going through the formal complaint process. And the tricky thing with this work is it's relational and it's, how do people feel? Do they feel heard? Do they feel like they got a resolution? So much of it is just feeling heard, but, but I would say in that resolved category, it's probably really tough to see, to know exactly if people felt like they got exactly what they needed or they were satisfied enough to not push it further. And it's, it's, it's an art and a science to this, to this work.
And I, I really do encourage people, if they're not satisfied, even if it doesn't feel like the formal complaint process is going to be something that, I, I want people to explore every option they have and go as far as they need to so that they really can be heard. And sometimes I think things be long in front of the board because even if it's a policy or practice that PPS is doing, maybe a teacher or principal can't change that, but the board can change that. The mascot situation is a perfect example of that, where there was just no mechanism by which people could change the name. They needed that mechanism. So that needed to go into the formal process.
So this is a question, maybe from Ms. Soden or the superintendent, the observations or recommendations, what's the process by which those get considered and either pursued or sequenced in the future?
So I would say it starts with Judy talking with the area in, of the central office that's in charge. So she's had some good conversations with some of our chiefs around the superintendent's leadership table when she sees trends and themes arising in their area. So I would say that's the first step. I think we, we also, what I would recommend is that we have a cabinet level discussion about what we see in this report. This is the first report that's come forward since I've been here, but I think there's some really good information. And not only do we want to continue educating our staff and the public about the role of this position and how it can help, but also how do we make sure the issues we're seeing and the recommendations Judy's making actually get implemented?
So I, I appreciate the, the takeaways from, from our Ombuds person. There's definitely something to take into consideration, but when I hear themes like our students or our families would benefit from taking a more collective impact approach with, by intersecting with other agencies and social services and it's, they're themes that we're noticing generally. And so as we, we've launched a new division of student support services, we're noting similarly that that's an area we want to be more coordinated in our care with, looking at the family as a unit. I'm excited about sort of an emerging work plan to sort of move towards that direction. And if, you know, if that's an area where we're noticing that it's, you know, it's triggering, you know, concerns that, that families are reaching out for, you know, we want to make sure not only that those services can be referred to our families, but they have some kind of hotline where they can kind of get some access to those resources. So, you know, stay tuned. That's going to be work in progress for, for us, but appreciate the report and, you know, it's duly noted, those areas that you've brought up and we want to make sure and address them somehow. Thank you.
I have, do you have something else?
Go ahead and respond. I have other questions.
I just have two closing things. You can go.
Okay. So this is just like a benchmarking question I'd have. So one of the things we did last July is we started announcing your, you know, your present and your phone number and your email, but recognizing that everybody watches our board meetings. I would be interested in knowing like what other jurisdictions, I know the city of Portland has a very active Ombudsmen and like what they do to inform citizens that this is available. I mean, I, I think I agree with the assessment that the formal complaint process isn't always very satisfactory to, to people and that ideally they have an opportunity to informally resolve it, which is part of our complaint process. So how do we, I say, we started one practice, but what are other ways in which we could make your presence more broadly known, again, with the goal of not having people enter into the formal complaint system? So I don't, I don't know if you have any suggestions or?
Advertising? Yeah. So we, we do put an announcement in the opening packet that kids get at the beginning of the year. And it would be great to have like a mid-year reminder. That would be nice. I have had some people call from hearing on the board, so that's, that was interesting to me too. And it's, so all of those things. I also do go out to the community agencies and that's another way that I can, can let people know. I've, I've been asking to go to other kinds of meetings. I have been invited to PTAs. So anytime I can get out that way. If you have a meeting you're going to and you'd like me to come, any of you, I'd be happy to do that too.
And I think the, the benefit of Judy being, participating in this association of Ombuds people, there are other school districts, not in Oregon necessarily, but larger school districts around, around the country that have this role and being able to share ideas on how they get the word out in addition to like the city of Portland and Mollum County.
And so my only, my last question just relates to the confidentiality and the record-keeping. In this document, it says that the communications with the Ombuds, is that the gender neutral term? That they're privileged and the privilege is being held by the Ombuds Office, but my sense is, my guess is in most cases, unless there's a student privacy issue, that they're, they wouldn't be confidential? I don't know.
Oh yeah, absolutely. So are there exceptions to confidentiality? Yes. Ombuds are required by law to make disclosure. That's the next one? Is that what you're asking?
No. If something's not student-related or student privacy issue, if somebody sends you an email, like I've got a complaint about X, that, that's a public record. It's, it's not confidential. So only, I, I just think we need to be careful with people.
How, how much you extend it? Yes.
Well, or people, like what is implied with what sort of confidentiality people have? Because if I read this, I'm thinking, I can send you an email and it's a private communication. But the reality is if it's not, doesn't have anything student-related in it, that it's technically a public record, just like anything else in the district, even though it's sent to you. So I just think we, we shouldn't overpromise. And then I guess the other question I had is about the records. Are we allowed to not keep notes and records?
Well, I, this, so this particular document I made with an Ombudsman Committee from the American Bar Association. So this is a general facts for K-12 Ombudsman. And different states have different laws. Oregon does not have a confidentiality for Ombuds. Washington does. We are working on that. And also there are some laws that pertain where if somebody in, in your role, if that would be an expectation, there are times when you can extend confidentiality. So it's, it's something that we're working on, you know, within the Ombuds Association as far as trying to help shore up some of the language in states that don't have that. But.
Yes, I would, just speaking for myself, if I read this, I would think that I had a lot more confidentiality than I think Oregon law allows. And I would also, also looks like, you know, I would expect if I read this, that notes would be destroyed or not kept. And I think we just need to be really clear what Oregon law currently says so that we don't get people in a, in a, in a position in which they overshare or show things that they, turns out they can't keep confidential. So that's just my last appreciation.
I guess I have one question. Do you, do you track by, by school, any issues that, that are coming in?
Yes, I do.
And if you see patterns, do you forward that information to somebody?
So typically when I have an issue with the school, I've contacted the school and the senior director.
Okay. 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 And I, I think it's, well, okay, I'll just put it this way. I, from the very beginning, when the Ombudsman position was restarted, five years ago? Four years ago? Four years ago. I, I think one of the things that I at least thought was going to be a benefit would be to surface some systemic issues. So I'm really glad to hear that, that you are kind of, when you see patterns of things that, that you are sort of forwarding them on to appropriate people. It would be, I would be interested in, in hearing a little bit more about what those systemic issues are that you've been forwarding on. I mean, you've talked about pretty broad categories of things. I just think it would, it's, it's sort of finger on the pulse kind of thing.
I agree.
So it would be, it would be interesting to get some more.
Detail.
More detail, yeah.
I know it's only been a year, but, you know, we've identified some of these systems issues. My hope is that as we continue to orient ourselves to a more solution-oriented, collaborative, school-responsive family, that our team is, is going to hopefully over time demonstrate through action and response that, you know, we can follow traditional sort of ways of resolving concerns and questions, just as a matter of practice. So hopefully over time, with our new team underway, that, that that becomes sort of the way of work for all of us.
Any other questions?
I just want to add that I follow what, what Chair Moore was talking about and I'd be really happy to work with getting the word out a little bit more to the students. I think, I know you had five just last year and I think there's definitely some more students that would probably want to come in and if they knew about it, they would really get some help with it. So I, I'd like to work with that becoming more of a known thing in our district.
Great.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I was, wanted to add two things, my two things I want to add. One, just that the, the systems thing is huge and things have changed a lot. It is very, very noticeable to families, to people who are doing the work, to me in my work, that now when I have a systemic issue, I have a place to take it. I have somebody who can hear it, who understands, and most importantly, now knows a next step they can take to help resolve it. We did not have that here for a very long time and it was really hard. So thank you for the work you do and thank you for the work you do. It has made a huge difference. The other thing I would just want to say is, Dad, I hope you get better really soon. He's watching. He loves our board meetings, by the way. He loves watching you guys. He thinks you're doing a great job too.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, construction excise tax exception to policy. I believe we do. So the board, the board first heard this item at their work session on September 11th and I'd like to invite Claire, Claire Hertz, Deputy Superintendent Business Operations, to provide an overview.
So this resolution would allow us to move the funding source from the bond, 2017, no, yes, 2017 bond funds to the construction excise tax funds. And this would help reconcile our 2017 bond program that is currently overextended.
You said that the other way around.
Okay. I, I, okay. So what we have originally, we put it into the 2017 bond and we're asking it to be moved to the construction excise tax.
Oh, right, to the liability, not the funds. Got it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we had protracted conversation around this and we're in general agreement. So thank you for pulling the resolution together. And I think our, we look forward to a follow-on, which is actually a revision of the underlying policy itself, defining the purpose and uses of the construction excise tax pot of money. So that this would not, it would not take a resolution of exception to use it for these type of purposes.
So there's been broad discussion about the middle school piece. And at the end of the resolution, it indicates that this funding not only, will not only impact the middle school implementation, but also the access relocation of portable classrooms. And I'm wondering if you could just share, I know in southeast Portland, the Bridger Portables are a big issue and then southwest, there's an issue as well. So maybe just extrapolate or share what that, what you're referencing there so that we know if, when we vote on this, what, what that means.
So this includes for the 1920 school year, two additional portables for Bridger and one additional portable for Maplewood. So this would be adding classrooms at two school sites, extending the Bridger Elementary in particular.
Thank you.
2020. 1920, for next year.
So the Bridger portable that's under construction right now, that's for this year and then two more next year?
Correct. For a total of three, yes, at Bridger.
The board will now consider.
So was that the answer to number two here? What projects have we committed to with these funds? It's in the memo.
So the, the memo goes into great detail of kind of a history of what we've done in the past historically. And one of the original resolution had asked for every five-year report. And so part of that is trying to give you the information of what we've collected over time in terms of resources in that fund, as well as what we've been spending it on. So there's two separate components in the, in the memo. And I'll bring that up here so I can be more conversant on it. So the first sets of numbers is to show what's in the car fund through 1617. And when we passed this in a resolution back in 1011, we said we bring an ongoing report showing what was accumulating in the fund. So this is that report that you were promised every five years. And so we are late in that report, but we have given you an update there. The next set of numbers is more of projecting what we can anticipate in terms of resources and expenditures that we know of in, in the future. So it allows us to, these are things that, well, first of all, we're being very conservative in the revenue part, so it, we have plenty of resources there. But it's also looking at what we spent in 1718, what we've said we would do in 1819. And then there's some small components that have already been promised in future years. Or not promised, but highlighted, estimated for future years. So this is showing that there's enough funds to cover the requests that we're, we're making today.
That's good.
So the, this chart shows the CET Revenue Fund 404. And this indicates in 201617, one and a half million, right? And this indicates in 201617, one and a half million, right?
So you're looking at a history of what was set aside in those funds.
That's a subset of the CET.
Okay, so can you give an estimate of what the, more or less, the annual revenue is coming through the CET?
It's been over eight million, but it, we've est, we've estimated six million, just to be conservative.
Okay.
That's down below.
It's in the chart right below.
Eight point four two four.
Where the light blue is.
Okay.
Are we, any other questions?
Yep.
I'm going to admit that we adopt Resolution 5737, authorizing usage of construction excise fund.
Director Constan moves, Director Bryn Edwards seconds, Resolution 5737 for adoption. Any, any public comment? Okay, any further board discussion?
I want to just thank Director, Deputy Superintendent Hertz for bringing this forward. We've had a lot of facilities, some unanticipated facilities costs this past year, and I think this is the right thing to do. And it shows a nimbleness in our ability to cover some unanticipated costs. And I think the, the alternatives, which was borrow more money when we already have about a billion dollars in outstanding facilities, funding between the two bonds, that this is the right thing to do. So thank you for putting this together. Not only does it address the middle school, but also some needed portables, so thank you.
I also think it's just good to look at this fund with a direct line to remediating the pressures from enrollment growth, because that's originally what it was intended for. So I think we're really reverting back to the original purpose that got a little too constrained.
So I think, kind of note to self, we might want to take a look at the underlying policy that governs the CET.
I'll plan on bringing that back later this year. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you again for my community, took a visit to Maplewood. When was it, late last year, bursting out its seams, so we're grateful.
Any other comments? Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 5737. Did you want to comment? Okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes, all opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Student representative?
Yes.
Resolution 5737 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with student representative Paisler voting yes.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is alternative procurement, lead paint stabilization. I think Emily Kortnich is going to be. For this item, the board will be acting in their capacity as the contract review board. Emily Kortnich, Director of Purchasing and Contracting, will be providing the report, supported by Daniel.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to talk about the district-wide lead paint remediation project and our recommended procurement and contracting method for it. And we're seeking an exemption, again, from the low bid procurement process and approval to proceed with an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, alternative contracting method, which I will call IDIQ for short. First, a very little bit about the lead paint remediation project. That will involve remediation at up to 94 district properties, remediation of spots both interior and exterior. There will be four phases of work that will be prioritized based on age of classroom occupants, location of paint deterioration, and amount of damage. And the project's expected to take two to three years. So in a project of this scope and span of time, with so many unknowns, we can't really do a, a traditional low bid process where we design the work, fully spuck it out, bid it, and award on a low bid process. So we are recommending that we use the IDIQ process, which is the same process that the district used for the district-wide fixture and partial pipe replacement project. In that process, we begin with a fully competitive RFP to select probably a number of qual, highly qualified contractors. We put them under contract, but without a definitive scope of work at that time. And then we issue a series of requests for job order proposals. And for, for parts of the work, portions of the work, and these will be phased and perhaps overlapping. The proposals that we solicit are only from those contractors who have already been deemed qualified, and will be awarded on a time and materials, so hourly plus markup, and a not-to-exceed level. The district will then issue work authorizations to the lowest bidder. So one or more of the qualified contractors could be working at any one time. It could, there could be one contractor working on a number of projects. It could be split up a lot of different ways.
Okay. Any questions?
Already been doing some lead abatement, paint work.
Yes, we have already. We've been using both some contracted services and also some in-house paint staff to do work to date. This will allow us to really pick up steam and start completing more projects quicker.
So are we already in phase one?
Correct, we're already in phase one.
That's. And just to kind of sum up, the main point of doing this is because we have a, what, I think you said, three or four-year time span with uncertain scope. This allows us to get some reasonable certainty around costs and flexibility. So we, we sort of have an in-house group of contractors ready to go. Do they, so when you issue one of those work order RFPs, do they go out and scope it out and look at it? Or is that something we do so that we know exactly what's involved? Or how, how do they, how do they price out?
Sure, they'll probably do a walkthrough of the buildings that are at issue in that particular scope. We may not know how much time is involved, and that's why it's on a time and materials basis. So they're giving us a guaranteed hourly cost, as well as a not-to-exceed threshold. So even if it ends up being much more hourly work than that not-to-exceed threshold, we're at least capped there.
And then a side benefit is, has to do with, I think, the greater depth we can go into in terms of their, their strengths and qualifications and the equity piece as well.
Sure, that's always a benefit of the RFP as opposed to a pure low bid process.
Okay, thanks.
And I should just mention that the children at Graut are very familiar with your lead, lead paint remediation efforts and are very appreciative. They can give you a very nice technical explanation for everything that's going on there.
I appreciate that very much.
Okay, the board will now consider Resolution 5738, Lead Paint Stabilization Project, exemption from competitive bidding and authorization for use of an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, alternative contracting method.
So moved.
That's a bit of a mouthful, yeah.
IDIQ is a little bit easier.
IDIQ, okay.
You sound smart, too.
So moved.
Okay, Director Bailey moves, Director Constan seconds, the motion to adopt Resolution 5738. Is there any public comment on Resolution 5738? I should probably explain. We have discovered that we, that public comment is open to all comers when we're, when we are acting in our capacity as contract review board. And there is no requirement to sign up ahead of time. So, no public comment? Okay, any further board discussion on this resolution? Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 5738. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Student representative?
Yes.
Any abstentions? Resolution 5738 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with student representative Paisler voting yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the next item, board policies. Tonight, the board will be holding a first reading on two policies and a first reading to rescind five policies. As Chair of the Board Policy and Governance Committee, which has considered tonight's policies, I'd like to ask Director Bryn Edwards to introduce each policy.
Thank you, Chair Moore. So we have a number of policies coming to the board tonight from the Board Policy and Governance Committee. The committee met again for the first time this school year on September 20th to consider a number of draft policies and recommended policy rescissions. So I'm going to start with the four policies that we're recommending rescinding. And essentially, we're recommending rescinding them because, for a variety of reasons, they're either outdated, duplicative, or not needed. To rescind a policy, we need to reverse the policy adoption process. That is, we have a first reading, there's a public comment period, and then a second reading to finalize the policy rescission. So the committee unanimously recommends four rescissions. And the first one is, sorry. Is the Public Information Program Policy, 7.30.010. And the primary reason why recommending a rescission is it essentially creates a communication department. And it was adopted in 1994. Well, we have a communications department, it's been fully implemented, so this policy is no longer needed. So that's the first policy. The next policy that we're recommending rescinding is the Teacher Transfer Policy, 5.20.060. And the reason why we're recommending a rescission is that the teacher transfer process is primarily governed by collective bargaining agreement, and transfer requests are not made to the superintendent. The policy is out of date and inconsistent with district practices. The third policy we're recommending rescinding is the Non-Contractual Grievance Procedure. This, this is a little bit more complicated, so I'm just going to read the paragraph that's in the staff report. Because there has been a, some confusion publicly about who's covered by this. So the Non-Contractual Grievance Procedure Policy creates collective bargaining, like grievance procedures for administrators or, or for those who can claim violations of civil rights laws or assurances given by the district or government, to governmental agencies. By its terms, it does not apply to dismissal, non-renewal, or termination of employees, or most attempts to change policies. This policy was adopted in 1997 and has not been amended since. It's not a widely-used policy and creates an unnecessary grievance procedure that is not required by law or contract that allows for appeals up to the board. There are several other ways administrators or other employees can raise concerns about the terms and conditions of their employment. So that is the third policy. And the fourth policy that we're recommending rescinding is Administrative Recommendations on Employment of Relatives Policy. And the reason why we're recommending rescinding this is the administrative recommendations. This particular policy has been superseded by the board's new policy, which we approved, is it earlier this year or last year? Anyway, recently. A Conflict of Interest Nepotism Policy. Maintaining the earlier policy potentially leads to confusion by those attempting to comply with district policy. So those are the four that we will be recommending rescinding. They'll be posted on the district website, and we'll be taking comment for 21 days. And they'll be brought back to the board in a public comment to consider, either by the committee, depending on how substantive the comment is, or to the, to the full board. And then we'll have a, a second reading by, by which we would be formally rescinding the policy. So those are the four policies that we're rescinding. So then next, the committee reviewed and further revised and recommended a first reading of amended preservation, maintenance, and disposition of real property policy. So this policy revision started in the 201718 school year in the Finance, Lot &amp; Operations Committee. It does a number of things, and I don't know if anybody from the FAO committee wants to speak briefly to the work, or we could just summarize it by, is it, anybody on the committee want to? Okay, so, go ahead. So this work started originally in sort of further defining how we treat, maintain and preserve our real property, and in which cases we would ever sell or lease our properties. And lays out some pretty stringent guidelines for, and I would say, sort of maintaining the, the board and the district's fiduciary responsibility to its students and taxpayers, that setting high standards for when we would ever relinquish a property. We certainly have seared in our brains this year the value of having flexibility within our property portfolio. It establishes essentially a two-step process that the superintendent will create an administrative directive around. But basically, the first step is the board in receiving a recommendation from the superintendent around a property that we may no longer need, all the requirements of that. And then the second step of the process is if we, the superintendent negotiates a disposition of a property or a lease, then it comes back to the board for a second, a second vote on the final lease or sale. So really adding in some pretty stringent requirements around our fiduciary responsibilities relating to our real property. So again, this would be a first reading, it will go out for a 21-day public comment period. And then if there's substantive comment, we'd either consider it in the committee. We have a meeting on October 12th, or at the board meeting after the 21-day comment period is over. So again, that would be posted on the, on the district website, under the draft policy website. There's a listing of the policies. And then finally, we have, oh, and there's another piece to this policy. And so in addition to the policy that came out of committee, there's also an amendment that we're going to, and I believe, do people have it on their places? I don't know if this is on people, I, I'll just read it. So in, in addition to adopting or moving forward with an amendment of this policy, we're also proposing the rescinding of another policy. And there's a section in the policy that we're rescinding that we are contemplating moving into this new draft. And we had a discussion about that at the committee, but there, I think we need to have further discussion. And also, there was not a consensus yet on whether we wanted to move it into the new policy. So in essence, the proposed amendment to the preservation, maintenance, and disposition of real property, the amendment would essentially say, the board delegates authority to the superintendent or his or her designate to approve and execute real estate transactions in which the total value of the transaction is at or below applicable delegation thresholds for district expenditures and revenue contracts as set forth in PPS Public Contracting Rule 45-0200, authority to approve and execute district contracts, and in which the transaction can be terminated by the district within 30 days or less, all other real estate transactions require board approval. So the reason why this is coming as an amendment, so it's not being, it's not being included in the policy that we're going to be posting, but we're posting it so if people have, the public has a comment about it, or. has a comment about it, or Board members have questions about it, just to know that that's something that we likely will be, the committee will be considering, and it may come to the full Board. We want to make sure that everyone was aware of it at the front end. Ms. Large, do you want to?
I just want to point out that the amendment is actually slightly more restrictive than the current language in 8.70.041. In addition to the $150,000 contracting threshold, it also requires the transaction be capable of being terminated within 30 days.
So, why do we feel that the amendment is not sufficient at this moment to just include in this draft and the first reading?
Because there was not a consensus on the committee to include it. And I think we wanted further discussion. We, actually, at the committee meeting, happened to have three of the committee members and an additional Board member, and there wasn't a unanimous, we want to put it in there. And so, what we did is we asked staff to craft some language, which is now we have a slightly narrower version, and to bring it back, and that we'll be able to consider it in committee.
So, is there any urgent reason why we should be considering this first reading today before we have this prospective new language? Because it seems more common sense to me that we would wait until we've fully discussed any potential amendment, integrate it into there, and consider it altogether.
I can answer that. It's not a, I think the substance of the policy change, this is a, I don't want to say it's non-material, but it is a subpoint in the larger policy. And we do need to move the policy forward, given the discussions around the BESC building. So, we want to have this, we want to be just absolutely crystal clear about our properties and what direction the Board is providing to the superintendent and staff, and the staff knowing, not having to guess what the criteria is for any property transactions.
So, clunky process, but decent reason.
Thank you. I'll take that.
Can I just say something about this? This is a substantially rewritten policy. This has, I think, an entirely different kind of thrust in terms of how PPS is approaching its properties. And it's, I think this is an important change for PPS. And I think it is an acknowledgement of some past unfortunate episodes of district property being relinquished without due diligence around future implications. So, this policy is intended to ensure that we're going to be really, really thoughtful and deliberate about how we manage our properties going forward. It also, I think, is the first time that we have identified property maintenance as, that we've called it out specifically in a Board policy. And this has been historically a real issue in this district. So, I think this is, I'm a little proud of this policy. I think it's going to be good.
First question, under the Sale of Real Property Clause, one of the sentences exed out has to do with public input process?
So, we still have a public hearing, and maybe it might be useful to have a little bit of history of why some of this language that was in here. So, go back to the early 2000s. I was on the Board then. And the city provided a fair amount of operating funding in some bridge years for the school district. And in return, they asked for some properties. And when PPS was looking at potentially selling some properties, the city and some of the city commissioners at the time demanded that the public entities have the first right of refusal, and that all they had to do was pay us fair market value. And so, this is a very, as Chair Moore stated, this is a very different philosophy about how we're going to approach the disposition of properties, that we are going to maximize the assets for the school district's mission. And while we appreciate that we have other public partners, we shouldn't be turning over properties to them at a rate, in a way that doesn't optimize our assets for the school district's mission. So, we've taken out most of that section, which gave public entities a right of first refusal. There is, and it's kind of hard to read because it's of all the redlining, but there is a public hearing process. There is also, you know, notification. Yeah, so if you looked on page two, number two, you've got a public hearing that will be held by the Board prior to declaring any real property for sale. And I'm sure, potentially, maybe under advisement, the superintendent's going to be creating an administrative directive that, also, that may be another place where there could be engagement about our process. Does that answer your question?
Let's just say it's, I appreciate that the old policy is here. That a redlined policy is here to show the differences. I'm missing a new policy that's easy to read.
Yeah, really good call. I'm not sure what happened, but it should be. So, we'll give that to you.
So, it wasn't clear to me what kind of public input process there was. And so, I, you know, want to see that. And so, I didn't, so, the notification of the city clause that's exed out doesn't read to me like they have the first right to buy the property. It just, that's just a notification and includes neighborhood association.
Okay, maybe that got taken out in subsequent years, but for sure, I can tell you, I was sitting right here. And they were asking us to, well...
I'm just looking at 1B near the...
Let's see, this was amended in 2009, so maybe that came out in 2009, but it definitely was in there in 2002 because essentially, that's how the City of Portland ended up with the Washington High School field.
But I'm just saying, now, why not, as a courtesy, notify the city and the county that, hey, we're declaring some property surplus as a courtesy? And certainly, a neighborhood association to say, hey, this is happening? Again, not to say you've got first dibs, but just to say, this has happened.
So, what I'll say is we'll bring that to the committee to have a discussion and take that under advisement.
Fair enough.
We decided, I don't know, maybe it came out even before it got to our committee. I don't know, it wasn't on the FAO Committee. Did that, that came out just in the last meeting, right?
I think it came out before.
Okay.
So, I think, okay, this is going back a ways now. So, I think in, I believe there was a paragraph in there originally, saying something along the lines of other public entities or community had right of first refusal. I think there was something in there. This, this version, the 1B and C were taken out at the last Policy and Governance Committee. But I, I could be wrong.
The clean copy says nothing about first right of refusal, just says, notify the city.
It was in the 2003, so maybe it got taken out. I'm just trying to share the history of why, why the notice was there. So, Director Bailey, we'll take your suggestion under consideration when we consider it. Any other questions? Okay. So, again, this policy will be posted on the district's website. This is the first reading. There'll be, the last date for all of these policies will be October 23rd, 2018. Also, in complementary to this policy, we'd be rescinding Policy 8.70.041, which is in your packet as well. Again, it's redundant. And the one thing we're potentially considering moving over into the new policy is the language that's in the amendment. Okay. So, the last policy that came out of committee was the Professional Conduct Between Staff and Students policy. On May 8th, the Board of Education and Portland Public Schools received the independent investigation report commissioned by the Board of Education regarding misconduct by a former PPS employee, Mitch Whitehurst. The report had many findings and recommendations. One of the changes the report recommended was that PPS and the Board of Education create a policy relating to professional contact, conduct between staff and students, which was referred to in the Mitch Whitehurst report as the Adult-Student Boundaries Policy. We had some discussion in the committee about the language, and we didn't want to confuse this for a line boundary change for students. So, we've renamed it, and I think it's got a really appropriate name now, which is the Professional Conduct, so really setting the standard within the title. The Policy and Governance Committee met last spring to start the discussion of the policy, and I want to thank Mary Kane, who's done an extraordinary amount of work since that time on the development of a brand-new policy relating to a really complex issue, and who's reached out to many different stakeholders in the development of this draft. The committee recommended a first reading of the policy tonight as an opportunity to share the draft with the broader community, knowing that this will likely have a longer comment period than the prescribed 21 days. Just given the complexity, the fact that it's brand-new, it impacts, you know, thousands of staff, volunteers, and other adults, and obviously, all our students, that this is really a sort of our public starting point for the discussion. We want to let parents, staff, or community members know that if comments, questions, or concerns, we'd like to hear them, either formally or informally through this process. And so, at this point, I'm going to ask, just because, again, it's a new policy, it's overarching for Ms. Kane, and Ms. Large, to provide a short overview of the policy, including who it applies to, who was consulted in the drafting process, and what generally the policy covers.
Thank you. Good evening, all. I wanted to take a moment to thank the many collaborators of this endeavor. Over the last few months, we received input from principals, vice principals, members of human resources, the Director of Athletics and coaches, virtual scholars, outreach coordinators, multiple pathways administrators, the Whitehurst Recommendation Implementation Committee, many of whom are here tonight, members of the Special Education Department, senior directors and area superintendents, our Title IX Coordinator, the Department of Transportation, community members, including Joy Ellis, who, along with her colleagues, produced the Whitehurst Report, and finally, students. Thank you, Nick, for your help. He and his classmates are the ones who are responsible for the new title, and it was a great improvement.
Thank you.
I also wanted, I'm very grateful for the PAT. They had input in a much earlier iteration. We've provided this latest policy draft to PAT again, along with PAPSA and PFSP, and we invite their input. With regard to your question of who, well, I also wanted to tell you, we received, we were also provided guidance by the U.S. Department of Education, also by OSBA, and also from looking at, like, policies in other districts. So, that helped us to try to formulate the policy that's before you. I won't go into the entire policy. It's available on the Board webpage for people to review and to comment. My brief interview, overview of it is, it's intended for all adults who have direct contact with students in district authorized activities, whether that's teachers, staff, custodians, volunteers, everyone who is interacting with students. The policy, it offers both strict prohibitions on some behaviors, such as engaging in romantic or sexual relationships with students. It also offers guidance on best practice in other areas, such as social media interaction, in-person interactions with students, traveling with students, respecting students' privacy. We also include in there the duty provision. We are requiring all employees who are made aware of any contact, conduct that violates this policy to report. We've also included language that addresses confidentiality and retaliation for reports that are made. And finally, we have a directive for the superintendent to develop annual training protocols and to have ongoing review to ensure that we are doing the work that we have promised to do. Do you have any questions?
I guess the other thing I'd like to add before we fill questions is, again, to thank Mary and all of the contributors who worked on this. If you were to track where this policy started and where it's ended, it has gone through many, many iterations. And I think there's probably more work to do, as Director Bim Edwards said. One of the overarching objectives was to try to be clear, but also not sterilize the relationships that caring teachers and other adults have with students. And that balance, I think, is, as you're chewing on this policy, you know, the thing I would ask you to think about and that we've asked our many stakeholders to provide input on, because we want to, we want to get that right.
I think that's a really good point, to not instill fear in developing personal connections, but to just have a really clear sense of personal boundaries.
One of the things, I think, was the hardest thing in trying to develop this, is many of the things that we would characterize as the best in teaching, in terms of developing relationships, can be used with ill intent to harm students. And so, it was finding, trying to find that balance. Again, recognizing that this is going to apply to a very small percentage of people, but unfortunately, it is for all.
You know, I just want to share a personal experience, and this has to do with why this sort of dry policy work is so important. But last year, a member of the community came to me with concerns about clearly inappropriate behavior between a coach and a student. And when that, when they brought it to their school-level leaders, there was an investigation, and the investigation was guided by the existing policy. And the investigation came back and showed that there was no violation of policy in the interaction with this coach. But common sense and a mother's intuition and all those things said clearly, this is not an appropriate relationship or appropriate communication between an adult professional and a student. And luckily, with a little agitation, we were able to elevate the issue and eventually get to the right resolution, which was the removal of that adult from that role. But I have a little bit of... that role. But I have a little bit of compassion for the professionals who were initially in the position of feeling bound by these policies that weren't sufficient to help them reach the right conclusion and justify it in the confines of the system. So that's why this work is really important, and I know that you have really woven in so many different resources to arrive at where we are here. So I appreciate that. And from everything I can tell, this is innovative, if not groundbreaking, certainly progressive in terms of the definitions that we've arrived at. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And thank you for the clarity, I think, in the policy. To reiterate, I was at an Equity Conference last week that had a student panel, and there were high school students that had been, you know, had a lot of issues as teenagers and were, had a difficult time staying engaged with school and talking about the essential role of relationships with one or two people that really kept them in school. But it's like you say, we have to have really clear policies that are going to help us ensure that, what do I want to say, that there are appropriate relationships, but not to fear having relationships with students, because that's what so many of our kids that don't have those in other places, that's what brings them to school. So having the right policies will certainly help us with that. So thanks so much, everybody that worked on this policy.
I got, I received so much input and so much assistance throughout the last few months. I think it's why it's in the shape it's in today.
So I would ask, especially those board members who aren't on the committee, well, obviously, you're welcome to join the committee's deliberation, but if you have questions or suggestions over the next couple of weeks, throughout the process, please put them in so that we, so that the final draft reflects your thinking, or you get your question answered, questions answered before we adopt the new policy, because it will be, I think, a pretty fundamental shift or a much clearer framework for all of our staff and provide guidance with staff, any adults, and hopefully provide that measure of safety for our students that we all expect as parents, that when we send our students off to school.
So I do have a specific question about one of the sentences on the last page, in the middle of the first paragraph. It says, "Staff who failed to report violations of this policy," et cetera. The next sentence says, "Violations of this policy may result," et cetera. The next sentence says, "Violations of this policy by volunteers." I'm not sure who that second sentence refers to.
Violations of, so people who are the actors. But I can clarify that.
So one sentence says, "Staff."
"Staff who failed to report."
Failed to report, okay.
But I can, let me try to clarify that piece.
Yeah.
So we'll maybe come with an amendment or clarification to the committee?
First sentence says, "Failed to report."
It's for those who are aware of activity and fail to report it.
And the second is?
For those who are the actors who are violating the policy. Perhaps that should be reversed.
And so, a clarification on the exception. If I'm a teacher and I spontaneously hug a student who is, you know, maybe they've come to me and shared something really personal, painful, that they're going through, and I give them a hug, that's a violation. Am I expected to report that under the exception policy?
The, and I will say, the hugging piece was the, one of the more difficult-
Absolutely. I absolutely want to say thank you to everybody who's tried to, you know, who's working this through, because it's-
Which is why we didn't prohibit hugging. It's that the student, that it will be student-initiated. So if they come to you for comfort, if they come to you, you know, there's the, they've scored the winning goal, and they rush up to a coach out of excitement. That's not a disciplinary action. That's not something that's going to-
I'm thinking more, you know, if somebody crumples in front of you, and you're, oh my gosh, and you do a hug.
Your humanity takes-
Yeah.
Yes.
But that, would that person be required to report that as an exception? And if not, would they get in trouble, potentially?
If they, if somebody saw that and reported it?
Or the student might, and this might, even without, even with appreciating that hug, might talk about it and then-
I think what we're asking for is more transparency and discussion about that. And we're trying to do that, talk about that more in the trainings that we've just started. To say something about it doesn't necessarily mean it's going to result in investigation or disciplinary action. But having an awareness, having the building administration have an awareness that it happened is important. I think it's what we were lacking before, is that communication, that awareness of what was going on. And again, it's not necessarily going to lead to discipline, it's not necessarily even going to lead to an investigation, but...
And I think that comes out throughout the policy, whether you have to give somebody a ride, or, I mean, there's the sort of extenuating circumstances, and I think in the exception section, it lays out, like, that you just need, if you have to deviate from the policy, that you need to be prepared to articulate the reason for the deviation. So the example you just gave, you know, depending on what it was that they told you, I think this is a case of, you know, using good judgment, being transparent, and things that people are unafraid to be transparent about are probably okay.
We know there are going to be things that, I mean, we tried to build in the realities of it. A parent is going to forget about picking up a student after practice, and it's 10 o'clock at night, and it's raining, and you're not going to leave that student behind. So there are exceptions, we build it in, and we just want you to let people know.
And I think, again, this 21-day or longer comment period will hopefully continue to refine scenarios as we think about how this policy will be applied. It isn't designed to be a gotcha policy, it isn't designed to be a trap for humanity, but it is designed to protect students and try to set reasonable expectations.
Yeah, I just want to thank, again, all the policy work.
Thanks, Director Bailey. And I think I want to just add on to that to thank staff for the introduction of the new template that they're using to forward policy drafts to the full board. I think, like, even the general public will find these, it's fairly easy, like, easy to read, like, why we're doing it. It talks about the policy development, best practices, fiscal impact, community engagement, options, valuation, timeline for implementation. It's a great, just one page, or two-page summary of the policy and why it's before us and why we're taking action on it. So thanks to the staff for, I think, a really great improvement in our policy process. So thank you. And thanks again, Ms. Kane, for all your work on that.
It is, it is a vast improvement over the first draft, I have to say.
Tchus.
Business agenda. The board will now consider the remainder of its business agenda, having already voted on resolutions 5734 through 5738. Ms. Hewson, are there any changes?
We have a new resolution before you tonight.
Resolution 5741 regarding the King Neighborhood Facility. That should be added.
I'm sorry, regarding what?
The King Neighborhood Facility.
Okay.
The annex.
Okay, so, do we do a separate motion on this?
I think it's been added to the business agenda and noted. If you'd like to pull it out, that's how I would handle it. I think we can vote on it as, with this addition.
Consent agenda, okay. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved. Second.
Director Bailey moves, Director Constan seconds. The adoption of the business agenda. Is there any public comment?
There is not.
Okay. Do we have any board discussion?
Yeah, a couple items. So I had some questions about the professional service contracts, a variety of them. And I want to thank Chief of Staff Soden and Dunya Meenu for the dialogue today about the contracts. And part of it was around just standardizing, somewhat similar to the staff report on the policy, so standardizing when we get contracts for approval, whether it's metrics or terminology. And I know that there's work underway, again, that Deputy Superintendent Hertz is leading up. So, but I want to appreciate, say, just I appreciate that conversation, trying to, again, if it's hard for board members to sort of decipher what we're voting on, you know, how can we make it easier, not just, well, not necessarily for board members, but just the community, to have some transparency in our work. I did have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask Deputy Superintendent Hertz about the performance auditing. So this was an action item that came out of the bond reconciliation discussion, and given it's a, it's been a much talked-about topic, and it's a pretty large, multi-year contract, it's 1.9 million over eight years, I just wanted to add, just to ask a couple of questions about the-
Actually, clarification, I think this is just the renewal of the performance audit function that we have had in place for the bond, but we put it back out to bid, and we knew we wanted to go with a different contractor. And included in this scope of work is the much smaller scope of work, which is the look back on the cost estimating questions that we brought up in the 2017 bond.
It's a million dollars for the first four years, and then it's a four-one-year renewals for a total of 1.9 million, and it includes the 2017 bond, correct?
Mm-hmm. But it, right. But this is, we had a performance audit function, we knew we wanted to put it back out to bid, we knew we wanted to have a different auditor come in, which predated those issues arising. But they are included in this scope of work as well.
So the audit is a different type of audit. We've had more procurement practice audit in, but now we're going to governmental standards for auditing. So there's, it's a more thorough process. But we're also having the look back at the 2017 as well.
And this was also in response to a recommendation from the Bond Accountability Committee about the insufficiency of the scope of the prior audit contract.
So I, just given the size of the contract, so it was done through an RFP, but just had some questions about the engagement of the Bond Accountability Committee in the RFP process or their consultation. Again, this is just given the amount of community discussion there's been about it. It's a large contract, and it also, I think, will provide lots of detailed information for the district, hopefully in terms of improvement. Go ahead.
Sure. We had a Bond Accountability Committee member who is also a senior management auditor for the city of Portland. She was a member of the Contract Selection Committee, so she helped evaluate the proposals. And the Bond Accountability Committee Chair, Kevin Spellman, will also assist in the development of the annual audit work plan.
Great. So they'll be fully integrated into the process?
Yes.
And then, the current scope of work that is included in the contract we're approving tonight, that's theoretically over the first four years of the contract, and then how would you see the one-year extensions being, the scope changing over time? So hopefully, we'll have that look back, and then some ongoing auditing, but additional four years. Can we talk about the thinking of making it eight-year?
So the intent is usually having a long-term relationship with an auditing firm is a good thing to do, bringing a new one in every year. You actually, they get to know the organization, and it makes it more thorough, they can build on their work each year. So I would always recommend having, you know, at least a five-year period is usually something that would work for. So having the first four-year, it also gives us a chance at that point to evaluate, is this working well? Do we need to put it out for another RFP? Or do we want to continue for an additional four years with the same firm? So it gives us that opportunity at a midpoint to make a change if we want to. So it gives flexibility at that point.
Have you worked with this auditing firm before?
I have not.
It looks like they've worked with a lot of other public agencies, but-
I have not worked with this one, but it, certainly, they are, their experience is extensive.
Any other discussion?
Oh, sorry, not with you.
Okay.
Isn't there a nicer way to say that?
I think you're excused.
Thank you.
That's my bad.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any other discussion of anything on the business agenda?
Thank you.
Or somebody else?
It's helpful getting the evaluation material. I found it hard to decipher the columns. And if you're looking ahead, getting a program description up front would be helpful as well.
That's exactly what the conversation was this afternoon, of like, what's the common terminology, what are the common standards? So you can look through, is this, you know, what did the district think about the performance of the contract in the last year, what, you know, what might be changed? But so there's, when you look at it, you have a framework within, to look at it within. And this is most, and the conversation mostly about professional, like, services contracts versus products, because professional services are just a little different than product contracts.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Student representative?
Yes.
Okay, the business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Pasler voting yes. Are there any other?
It's part of the business agenda.
Anything else for the good of the order? Student representative have a-
Yeah, so I'd just like to go over real quick. So last week, thank you to Courtney Westling. I attended the Joint Committee on Student Success Student Roundtable on Thursday, and I took some students from our Cleveland Alliance for Racial Equity class with me, and we met with four legislators, all from all-around Oregon. Fortunately, we had one present at our table that was from, like, about East County. So it was a solid hour of being able to sit down with legislators and really pick their brains and actually have our CARE students talk about a survey that they've been working on that addresses racial profiling in hallways in PPS. And on the drive back to Cleveland that morning, the two girls from CARE would not stop talking about how they really felt the legislators listened to them. It was a solid hour that they got, and with, you know, eye contact and everything, and so it's something that they've, that was great. They've had issues in the past with administration, not listening or listening, but then not, you know, taking action. So that was really awesome to see, and I think, you know, stuff like that should be happening more often. So that was really great to attend. Today, we had our District Student Council meeting at Benson. It was the first- It was the first meeting that we're trying to move around the district at the different high schools. That's going really well and we're getting more and more input and ideas for our PPS Student Summit that's going to take place on December 1st. We're really excited about that. Our next meeting is October 16th at Cleveland High School, so go Warriors. And after that, Wilson and then Franklin. So we're really trying to get around to the different schools and while we're there, hopefully have some students from those respective schools come and meet with us as well.
So yes, we did have the Joint Student Success Committee event on Thursday, and it's so last week, who remembers? Several of us participated in the roundtable. Does anybody want to say anything about that? Otherwise, I will.
Go for it.
Well, I'm not sure I'm allowed to have a political opinion, but I can certainly speak factually to the inadequacy of the funding in public ed here in Oregon K-12. I think what we heard from that roundtable of invited superintendents, board members, other stakeholders, was a lot of similar themes around the kind of work that school systems want to engage in, and that requires resources. However, you can't just talk about revenue, you have to talk about all the other constraints and cost containments, and therein lies the dilemma. And I think there was a lot of folks who shared stories that illustrated what those challenges are. So I think it was, it was a good conversation, it was a large group, I think it was representative of folks around the region. But I know that Chair Moore and Director Brim Edwards were there as well, if they want to add.
Yeah, I think the theme for the evening was, we need more money. And we need revenue reform in order to get the money. And I think that was the theme for the, the roundtable, which was a two-hour discussion of, how many people? 25 people? Something like that? With, with most of the committee, and then followed by a two-hour public hearing that was taken up with, how many, how many people, probably 30? 30 people giving testimony, maybe? A lot of people.
No, it was, it must have been at least six people because.
Two minutes, two minutes apiece for, yeah. So a lot of people, mostly parents, and the prevailing theme in all of it was there's not enough money devoted to K-12 education in Oregon, and it's having direct impact on the experience of students in classrooms in every district.
So the only thing I would add is the breadth of the ideological spectrum of the legislatures was, you know, the, from, the whole spectrum was there. And I think it was really important for them to hear from leaders and parents and teachers, superintendents, about sort of our common, our common thinking on this. I thought there was, especially with Superintendent and Chair Moore, a lot of commonalities in the comments. And we had a very bipartisan group of legislators listening to that, and several of them mentioned their school visits earlier in the day, left a big impression on them as well. So for the PPS schools that hosted those legislators, I know it was really useful and informing their thinking. And I, and I do think they were there to listen.
I would echo that, just from the session in the morning, it was rather wonky, really getting down to specific strategies on student success. And I think that our PPS team at Roosevelt, who was talking about ninth grade strategies, ninth grade on-track strategies, and really tracking students individually toward graduation, was incredibly impressive. And it was a testimony to what we, the, the strategy that we came up with for the Measure 98 funds, and a very coordinated approach. It's a significant investment, giving teachers relief time to be able to meet together, totally student, individually student-focused. And it really had an impact. And I would say, in that session, PPS was on the top of its game.
So I would just add, because I think it's helpful for, for the listening audience to hear what some of the themes that, that folks were advocating for. In addition to these, you heard testimony, often talking about, how about full funding of the quality education model, of the importance of high-quality early education opportunities and access for especially underserved communities, but all. Talk about a focus on targeted interventions and support that schools could, school systems could put in place for students not meeting academic milestones. I heard a lot of talk about this topic of making sure that we're supporting our students to stay on track. It would be helpful to have criteria that standardize their, post-secondary planning, continued conversation around career technical education. So these are some of the many themes that I think people raised. I think it's the combination of all of those things that, you know, will help to make a significant difference in our school systems.
I was there when the legislators were at Alliance at Meek, and the teachers there, as usual, did a great job of showing the great work they're doing, teaching kids how to make 3D printers, not only use them, but make them, which was an iteration I wasn't aware of. Plus the auto, auto shop, it's a great class. And then also talking about the, I think it's the Discovery Program, it's the six-week introductory program for new Alliance students.
Sample everything.
That's a great example of, you know, self-awareness, social emotional learning, integrated in with academics as well. That's, and one student in particular, sure, I'll talk, and talked about what a great experience that was in helping him integrate into the school.
Okay, so stay tuned. We have a legislative session coming up in February.
February? January.
January. Late January. So we'll see what happens. Any other information, comments?
I'd like to mention just briefly that this weekend with Brenda and Brian Martinak, I attended a little event for the trauma intervention program. TIP is the service that puts volunteer trauma counselors into our schools at the death of a student, death of a teacher, or other significant trauma. It's a wonderful program, doing fabulous things for us and for our kids, and I believe we will be hearing more about it very soon.
One last thing. I'd also like to make aware that the Guber National Debate took place tonight at Roosevelt High School. While I was not able to be in attendance, I know that Roosevelt High School students, as well as other high school students from the PPS district, were there. So just letting everybody know, I think that was a great event for them to attend, so hopefully people got some ideas.
Yeah. Like the candidates.
Exactly.
From the students.
From the students, 100%.
The next regular meeting of the board will be held on October 16th. We have an executive session upstairs immediately following this, this meeting, and we have a work session next Tuesday on October 9th.
Time never stops.
Yes. Okay. We are adjourned.